Got the recording and give me just a second to get the YouTube stream going. And we should be live to YouTube.
All right, with that, I will open the regular city commission meeting for March seventeenth, St. Patrick's Day, 2021. Happy St. Patrick's Day, everybody. Let's do the roll call.
Commissioner Denise McGriff.
I, and I want for the record to show that I am wearing green today.
Commissioner Rachel Lyle Smith. Commissioner Frank O'Donnell.
Here.
And Commission President Rocky Smith.
Here. All right, on Zoom, we're gonna skip the flag salute and we're gonna go into ceremonies and proclamations. And tonight, on our proclamation, I'm gonna read this proclamation, I'm also going to talk a little bit about it. And this is a big deal, so I wanted to definitely take some time to commemorate this tonight. So I'll start by reading the proclamation and I wanna follow it with some, some history. This is the proclamation for the one hundredth Oregon City Westland Football Game and Rivalry Day. Proclamation, Oregon City Westland Rivalry Day, whereas the cities of Oregon City and Westland wish to recognize the efforts of their citizens to create and maintain a positive family environment where children can learn the value of constructive competition. And whereas the cities of Oregon City and Westland value tradition and history as an as an essential parts of their communities. And whereas Oregon City High School and Westland High School formerly known as Union High School have competed valiantly in the sport of football continuously since nineteen twenty-one, except for the during the pandemic of 2020. And whereas on April second, 2021, the teams representing these schools will renew their annual rivalry for the one hundredth time. And where this is the longest continuously played rivalry west of the Mississippi and therefore worthy of recognition. And whereas the City Commission of Oregon City desires that the pioneers again defeat the Lions, and the City Council of Westland desires that the Lions again defeat the pioneers. Now therefore, we, the City Commission of Oregon City and the City Council of Westland hereby recognize and commend all citizens who have participated in this annual Gridiron Iron Classic to support the efforts of the current teams by proclaiming April second, 2021, to be Oregon City Westland Rivalry Day. We further recommend that in the spirit of the day, that citizens wear the clothing appropriate colors of the appropriate colors and refrain from crossing the river unless business requires until game time. Now, I had a dilemma this evening because it's St. Patrick's Day and I had to wear green. I didn't wanna wear green, but I have a little shamrock here. I have my Pioneer shirt on and I wanted to talk really briefly about this anniversary. A hundred years, so nineteen twenty-one, the first football game takes place between the Oregon City, between Oregon City High School and what is today Westland High School. What I find fascinating about that is, for those of you that know the history of these two towns, the history of both these two towns are intertwined. And Oregon City was founded, or Oregon City's, you know, father, McLaughlin, you know, getting Oregon City started, Dr. John McLaughlin. And on the other side of the river, there was a man named Robert Moore. And Robert Moore was the one who started getting Westland founded. So you had Dr. McLaughlin on Oregon City's side and Robert Moore on the Westland side, both building cities. And they were competitive with each other, back and forth. And Dr. McLaughlin actually, from his window of his house, looking from the mill site, could look across the river to Robin's Nest, which was called at the time, and Robert Moore's house up on the bluff in Westland. McLaughlin could see Robert Moore's house from across the Willamette River. And Robert Moore could look out his window and see John McLaughlin's house on the Oregon City side. These two men worked very hard to build two towns. Now, what's really interesting is, you know, that Oregon City got started as a city incorporated eighteen forty-four. In eighteen fifty-seven, McLaughlin is at the end of his life dying in his house, and across the river, Robert Moore is dying as well. What's fascinating about this story is Robert Moore dies September second, eighteen fifty-seven, and Dr. McLaughlin dies the next day. Now, a lot of people would talk about that competition between the two cities and the ongoing competition between the two men and the two cities that eventually ends up being part of this rivalry today with the Oregon City Westland Football Game. And so, the football game will take place April second. We know that most people will not be able to actually see the game in person, so we're hoping there's ways that people will be able to see it virtually, but we are also working on other ways to commemorate this exciting event. And so, I wanted to share just a couple of the histories bits of the scores. I don't know if I can share my screen, it looks like I can't. Hold on, I'm sorry, I have this.
Didn't Jacob give you permission to share?
Yeah, they did, I already checked this all out. All right, so I, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time, this is, this will be in the record, but this is the list of all the scores from Oregon City Westland Rivalry History from game one, nineteen twenty-one. But I wanted to point out a couple of things. There's been ninety-nine football games so far, the hundredth takes place April second. There was one tie. In back in nineteen thirty-six, there was a tie between Oregon City and Westland of zero-zero. That's the only tie in the history and at a time that there was not overtime. The other pretty interesting score, nineteen thirty, Oregon City ninety-one, Westland zero. That's the biggest difference in the score, but in the history of the series, here's the good news. Oregon City fifty wins, Westland forty-eight wins, one tie, for a total of ninety-nine. And so, even at the end of the hundred years, even if we don't become victorious, we're still ahead in the whole series. So I think that shows definitely Oregon City's, you know, level above that, that town across the river that we love to, you know, compete with every year. So there you go, Oregon City Westland Rivalry, one hundred years coming up this April second.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for you.
Go for it.
So. I don't know if everybody is aware that before Oregon City High School was built, people who lived in Oregon City went to Westland High School, so what did those people do?
I don't think we have time to get into that right now, but.
I'm just bringing, I'm just bringing up a conundrum here. And I will have to tell you that I will not be able to abide by your, your, your request to not cross the bridge, I'm sorry, I just, I have to go over there.
All right, well, we have.
I will refrain from any fall you are, however.
Hey, shop somewhere else, shop somewhere else.
Even if our students were going on to the Westland side, that was still part of Oregon City at that time, really, wasn't it? All right, moving on, thank you for that. All right, we are now moving into citizen comment, and I know that I have two people listed for citizen comment, Lisa Novak and William Gifford, and we'll start with Lisa Novak, state your name and city of residence, and then we'll have three minutes. If she's on.
You have to press star six to unmute yourself.
Thank you, and good evening, Oregon City Commissioners. My name is Lisa Novak, I am a resident of Oregon City Park Place Neighborhood. Tonight, I am speaking on behalf of the Park Place Neighborhood Association, specifically Park Place Park. As you may be aware, there is an undeveloped landlocked property located just north of the park, and the potential now exists for a road to be cut directly through the park and adjacent to the children's play area and off-leash dog area to serve this one property for future development. This very topic was an agenda item during the Neighborhood Steering Committee meeting of March fifteenth. We would like to thank Ms. Hurway and Mr. Reed for attending that meeting and for providing background information regarding the property. A dozen or so residents also attended the meeting and are in strong support of the park and have voiced their concerns. As you can imagine, this is a matter of significance for the neighborhood residents and steering committee. Volunteer hours have been invested by several members of the committee and community to improve the park, for example, obtaining a grant to replace the damaged playground equipment, a cleanup event, and the nomination of heritage trees. In fact, the steering committee is planning a long overdue ribbon cutting for the new playground, which has been delayed due to COVID. We trust that the park is just as significant to the commission as it is to the community. Our hope is that a resolution satisfactory to all stakeholders is achieved. To move this forward, the neighborhood respectfully asks that the city commission include this topic as a future agenda item for review and discussion. We thank you and are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. I think that most of us are aware of this issue and, you know, or have definitely been looking into it. I know that staff needs to do some work in looking into it, so I believe that most of the commission, or if not all the commission, supports the idea of having that come back in the near future for us to discuss. And so, I think we would reserve our questions for that meeting. Is that, is that a consensus? I see everyone doing that, shaking their head, yes, okay, so that, our city manager will take that and come back at a future meeting and we will, we will address those issues.
Commission President, I would propose to bring it back at the second meeting in April.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next on the list, William Gifford.
Good evening, Mr. President and City Commissioners, my name is William Gifford and I live in Oregon City. I have two brief topics for us tonight, I'll address them in order of urgency. Number one is that I hope that, that everyone is aware of the, of the special district election, which is going to be happening on May eighteenth. I mean, we just got through one, one, one election, and congratulations, mayor-elect. The, the issue is that the fire district has two positions open, and I was contacted by one of the, one of the fire commissioners who asked me if I could find someone from Oregon City to step up and run for that commission. The point being that although we are the county seat, we do not have any representation on the fire district board, and that really needs to be addressed. I pointed out also that, that they only have one woman on that board. And he thought that would be a great idea to get some woman from Oregon City. I said, don't, you know, do they need some firefighting experience? He says, no, what they need is business experience. We need somebody that really understands how, how to run this organization more than how to fight fires, they've got a great staff to do that. The problem is filing deadline is tomorrow. Mic drop. The, the other thing that I wanted to mention is, so please go to Clackamas County Elections and, and find out how to do that. Second thing I just wanna mention is that next Tuesday is the, is the monthly forum for the Oregon City Business Alliance, and we are having Mr. James Graham and his consultants come and give a presentation regarding the, the efforts that have been made thus far on the Urban Renewal Report, which was almost given tonight at the Urban Renewal Commission Meeting, missed that, so I'm hoping that their, their report will be something similar to that next Tuesday from eleven-thirty to one, please go to OR City, no, OCBusinessAlliance.com, OCBusinessAlliance.com. It's a free meeting, but registration is required, so thanks for your time.
All right, thank you. Is there any other citizen comment this evening?
I don't believe so.
All right. All right, we will be moving into our presentations this evening, five A, Clackamas County Housing Authority Presentation. We have staff here from Clackamas County, and I'm not sure who's making the presentation, Jill Smith, I imagine, okay, I'll introduce Jill and then you can take it over.
Hi, everybody, I'm Jill Smith, I'm the Director of Housing and Housing Services for the Clackamas County Housing Authority. My job is to also coordinate housing and housing services for Clackamas County, so kind of a dual role. And I was invited to talk to you about a couple specific topics, the Affordable Housing Bond, as well as just touch on briefly the major, the metro major. And I just wanna commit that we have a lot of folks that live in Oregon City that we serve, and I think that there's likely a lot of interest in what we're working on. And I'm happy to come and give regular updates, answer questions, address concerns regularly. So I'll work with Laura to ensure that I can do that. And with that, I'd like to share, share screen if that's okay with everybody. There we go. Everybody see that, okay? Yes, great. So, just a quick reminder of what the Affordable Housing Bond is. Couple years ago, two thousand eighteen, Metro pulled together a bunch of city, county communities across the region within the urban growth boundary to really talk about the need for housing that's affordable to lower income members of our community. And because this is focused within the urban growth boundary, unfortunately, it only applies to about half of Clackamas County, which makes it a little bit more challenging, because we have folks in need everywhere, as you well know. But the voters actually approved this bond, which is specifically for developing housing that's affordable to lower income people. It will actually create homes for twelve thousand people, and we have to have it committed within seven years. And I will open this up to questions at the end. These are the specific production goals that Clackamas County is required to meet with our portion of bond proceeds, so. Yes.
Your slide isn't advancing.
No, it's not, burn it. Let's see. It's, it advanced on my screen, so what, what do you guys see?
Your opening slide.
Okay.
Affordable Housing Bound, Bond Program.
Jacob to the rescue.
I'm sorry, it says your screen sharing is paused. So.
Just try to reshare the screen and make sure that you just are showing your screen and not your PowerPoint program itself.
Okay. Can you guys see that? Yes, okay, I'm sorry. And I wanted to, before I get into the production goals, let you know that Clackamas County qualifies for twenty-point-eight percent of the total funding that will be, the revenue that will be generated from this voter-approved bond. And the, the way that that was calculated is that's the assessed value of the property tax within each county within the metro boundary, and that's twenty-point-eight percent that will come to Clackamas County, that will be used in Clackamas County and that we get to do the planning for. Metro is simply providing oversight as far as a regional oversight committee that they assemble, that has equal representation of people that are Clackamas County residents as to Washington County and Molloma County. And our specific goals for our county are to develop eight hundred and twelve affordable units, and we have to have at least four hundred and six of them that are two-bedroom or larger because of the need for families to have places to live. And at least forty percent of those have to serve people who earn thirty percent or less of area median income, and I know that's a mouthful, but what that is, is it's extremely low-income people, and to give you an example, somebody, a single person that's earning thirty percent of area median income makes nineteen thousand three fifty a year or less, so between zero and nineteen thousand. So generally, those are your seniors on social security or somebody on a disability payment, and there's no way they can afford housing on that kind of income. So thirty percent of the units, I'm sorry, forty percent of the units have to serve that population, so we have to use this funding as well as other funding to buy down the rents so that these folks can afford these units. Are you still seeing my slideshow? Yes, okay, I'm paranoid now. So we went through a whole big community planning process, this is a couple of years ago now, and we created a Clackamas County Plan, and it's on the Housing Authority website, you can even Google metro affordable housing bond, Clackamas County, it'll come right up. But our priorities for our county are to create opportunity across the region. The housing, affordable housing is needed everywhere and it should be located, hopefully all across the county. We really wanted to focus on affordable housing in high-opportunity locations, and what that means is it's near, it's close to a grocery store, it's near transportation, it's near places people need to be, like work. We've learned a lot from the way, that way back in the day that the federal government placed public housing kind of in the middle of nowhere, that it doesn't meet the needs of folks. It's all about creating opportunity for people in need, addressing homelessness in the community, and advancing racial equity and inclusion. We know that people of color are desperately impacted by homelessness, so if we can solve for that, we'll open doors to everyone that's low-income and needs housing, but that is what we're trying to solve for, is how, how to get access to people of color and all of these different groups that were identified as really being priorities for this work. So I'm so excited to jump forward a couple of years and tell you that once we received this funding and we did all the planning, which took about a year, we were able to hold a notice of funding opportunity, and we had several applications come in from developers that had identified land and they really had to be ready to go. They had to own the land, control the land, have proper zoning in place, and their projects that they proposed to us had to align with those priorities that I just talked about. And we were able to award, well, three projects through that, and then there's also one that was kind of a early award that's in Gladstone, that's a Housing Authority project, that we're excited because they're located, you know, across the area, and there's one other that we're actually working on right now, that we have an MOU with Lake House Swego, a metro on, that will be on a beautiful, right in the middle of downtown Lake House Swego, so fingers crossed that goes through, because we really, as you see, need to get over on the other side of the river. So I wanted to take you through, this is the funding, this is just quickly to show you what we're kind of striving for. With the bond allocation, Clackamas County got a hundred and sixteen million. Based on these tentative awards that we've made for four projects, we've used forty-three percent of this bond funding, yet we're fifty-seven percent towards our goals for unit production. So we anticipate we're gonna be able to exceed those unit production goals and build more housing than, than we're being required to, and that is our goal, it's a huge need. And then I wanted to just talk to you about the actual projects that are, that are in the early stages there, this one is just getting ready to have financing closed, and it will probably be the second one to actually be developed. Fuller Road Station, it's a development that's in Clackamas, unincorporated Clackamas County, it's right at the Fuller Road Station, kind of by the mall, right on the transit where the parking is there. And it will provide a hundred units of affordable housing. Twenty-five are actually set aside for people leaving homelessness, and a number of those are gonna be for foster youth, who, you know, a large percentage of those kids transition right into homelessness, and this was just meeting a tremendous need. And then it shows you the, the various income levels that those are at, and there's also an intensive service plan that's aligned with this property, and something that I was gonna hold off to talk to you about until the end, but it really fits well here, is the Supportive Housing Services Measure Funding, Measure twenty-six-two-ten, that passed a year ago. We will use that funding to ensure that these projects have services they need. So that once these high-needs folks are placed in housing, that they stay housed successfully. People need more than a roof, they need services. There's, there's generally reasons that people end up homeless, whether it's job training and help with job placement, or, you know, they have just a disability that they need help with, or there's alcohol and drug substance abuse problems, people need wraparound services, and we actually have funding to pay for that now. And the next project is the Good Shepherd Village. This one will be in Happy Valley, and I actually talked to Happy Valley City Council about this last night, so we're doing lots of this. They're going through an approval process for this project, which would bring a hundred and forty-two homes for seniors and veterans and families. Fifty-eight of those units would serve the lowest-income families. And it gives you a breakdown of unit size, so it's also helping us to meet our goals for family-sized units. So we're super excited about this one as well. The developers on this one are Caritas Housing and Catholic Charities, Catholic charities would be the ongoing owners and managers. So as you can see, the Housing Authority in, in, with the metro bond funding, our priority is just to be a, we're a funder, we're a pass-through entity, so our, we're responsible for oversight and administration and ensuring we meet our goals, but the Housing Authority certainly does not need to be the developer, owner, or manager of these units. And then, the last one is Maple Apartments, which is in Oregon City, which is planned to be in Oregon City, which is super exciting. It's family housing, thirty-one units for field laborers and their families, twelve set aside for agricultural workers, nine that have deep supportive services for people transitioning out of homelessness. And then you see the unit sizes, it really helps us meet our family unit size targets and goals. This project was presented to us by Community Development Partners and Hacienda CDC. Super exciting project, a hundred and seventy-one units there. And then this project is actually the Housing Authority's project, it's in Gladstone. This was labeled our Phase One project. Every jurisdiction, Multnomah County, Washington County, and Clackamas County, got to pick one project that was kind of ahead of everything to use bonds to fund. And this project was an abandoned building in Gladstone that used to be a, like a congregate care facility. Years ago, it had sat vacant for three or four years, and there, there's a lot of, you know, it's a vacant building. It was attracting not great activity, a Sun Webster Road in Gladstone. We're transitioning it into 48 units for seniors, 55 and older. 16 of the units will be deep services for people transitioning out of homelessness. And we've had tremendous support from the city of Gladstone. They actually have been identified as the highest rent burden city in the whole region. And they've had a tremendous amount of their senior residents who have been longtime renters that haven't been able to retain their housing that have become homeless. So this really aligns with the need that they've identified. And then finally, I just wanted to tell you that right now, we're in the process of planning for the measure funding. And the measure funding is all about services and rent assistance. And it's a lot of money, it's a 10-year measure. Clackamas County will receive about $52 million a year once we start getting the tax collected and going. It's regional, again, it's within the urban growth boundary. We're doing plan.
All right, we'll give her a second to see if it comes.
Sorry, I just, I just want you guys to know.
You were frozen for just a moment, but you're back, so you're good.
Yeah, it's telling me my internet's unstable. I just want you all to know that this tremendous opportunity is coming our way. And we really believe strongly that we can end homelessness in Clackamas County. And we want you to be our partner and help us to achieve this. The bond aligned with this amazing resource of measure funding, we, we can do great things, and we intend to. And I'd just love to answer your questions.
Right, and questions from the commission? I see Commissioner McGriff has a hand up.
Yes, thank you very much. Hi Jill, nice to see you again. Where are we on rehabilitation or new construction of the projects in Park Place? Are they in anywhere in this queue, or is that still on the table? Are we still talking about it? Are we not talking about it?
So that's the question I was hoping you would ask. We are still talking about it, it's in our annual plan, that the Housing Authority is actually having a public hearing on tomorrow, tomorrow morning, the board, with the Housing Authority Board. The problem with it is, when we looked seriously at this a few years ago, all of those people have to move somewhere, somewhere affordable, and they all need to get a voucher in their hands so they can afford to do that. As you know, these are high-needs people that are very low-income. So when we approached HUD and a lot of our electeds that represent us in DC, there was a lot of concern about what would happen to the residents. So we've postponed that a bit until we get some of this housing built, because they need a place to go. So as we build, as we build this housing, we are requiring that the folks that receive this bond funding have a priority for families who are being, you know, transitioned out of public housing.
Well, the idea that I discussed with you very briefly was that you do a hybrid model where you build some new units, you move those people out, you tear down the ones that they're in, and you just keep recycling. So those people do not have to leave the community and their supportive community that they have here. Hope that that gets brought up, because I think it is really an ideal situation. It might cost a little more in construction, but the long-term psychological benefits of it would be, would be worth it.
And that's exactly the model that we're doing in Milwaukee right now with, I don't know if you're familiar with, it looks just like the ones in Oregon City, but it's right across the street from Providence Hospital. That is the model we're doing there. The zoning is allowing us to increase the number of units there. So that's, that's the first one, and that will give us, again, more units. And then the next one will be the, the two Oregon City sites. But the units are beyond their useful life. They, we, it's, I don't feel good about people having to stay there. I mean, they were meant to be temporary housing that was built in, you know, back in the 50s or earlier. So we are aggressively moving forward to get units for these folks.
One last, we also talked about ownership rather than rental?
Uh huh, yep, we did. That, again, is something that's actually in the plan that we're doing in Milwaukee. That's the first one, there's a bunch of homeownership units mixed in with a variety of rentals. And if zoning permitted, that would be an amazing community to transition to in Oregon City. We would love to do that.
All right, Commissioner LaSmit.
Thank you. So are, are you collecting, or do you have waiting lists for these properties that are, I believe they're under construction or in development?
We don't yet. Once they are to the point where they're just about ready to be occupied, that's generally when they'll open it up for a waiting list. So it's probably, the Webster Road one will be ready in about a year. That'll be the first one, and then the Fuller Station one, right on the heels of that. So you'll see those lists open, and we will, we'll push that information out and share it with everybody when it happens.
I love the projects, I think they're a great use of the bond measure and the measure that passed last year. There's lots of discussion about the need for services to go along with just housing. And, and I think we would all agree that that's been one of the items that is, along with housing, that has been seriously lacking in our ability to help folks transition out of homelessness or very low income due to a variety of circumstances. How would you address the concern that I have heard about providing services to the homeless and therefore attracting more homeless to come to Oregon City or to go to Gladstone or go to these places where we're providing, obviously, more amenities and more services? But speaking specifically of Oregon City, but just in general, how would you respond to that concern?
Well, I, I think there's so few resources that are in Clackamas County that most of the folks that need help now, that are our residents, are going to Multnomah County, to be honest with you. Especially our families, we don't have anything for homeless families. They're, they're ending up going out into Gresham and have been for years to the only family shelter. So the goal of this measure is to build a regional system so that all of the funding isn't going into one place. So that if you are homeless and you live in Oregon City, there's resources at, in your neighborhood. But one thing that we've done in Gladstone to specifically address that concern is we're doing a priority for people who have lived in Gladstone. They will get preference above all others to live in that building. So that's an example of a creative way that we can work on that. But I really, the goal of the region from, you know, Washington County, Multnomah County, and us is to allow people to, to get served where they live, from where they're from.
All right.
So Jill, are all the units portrayed tonight, are they all rental units in nature and not ownership units?
Yes, they're all rental units. The bond does allow for affordable home ownership, and we hope to build some of that in, in the Milwaukee sites, where Hillside Park is right now, public housing. Very, very minimal amount, only 10% of the money can be used to serve that little bit of higher-income folks.
And will they be, the, the units that provide the opportunity for ownership, will they be single-family units or they be essentially condominiums?
Um, you know, right now, I think the planning shows them being more of a townhome-type condo model than a single-family unit. But it could be either. Again, we'll likely do another RFP, and if developers came to us with a model that had single-family homes that worked, we would certainly consider that, it's eligible.
And the reason I ask that question about multifamily units and ownership is I've had a brief conversation with this Roseanne from the Home Builders, and she states that home builders are reluctant to enter into building condominiums because they present more liability to the builder. And I want to hear more on that subject from her when the time comes, so thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Commissioner Smith, I guess the question I have is that, on all of these committees, how is Oregon City represented on, on these things?
On the, like the, the oversight committees that we're putting together? We haven't necessarily looked at the cities. Right now, the committees are being filled based on, like, expertise and/or lived experience. So we've got about 50% of the people that are writing our major plan right now are people of color and people with lived experience of homelessness. And then the, the other part, they're really service providers that work in Clackamas County, serving folks. We have not looked at where people are from, to be honest with you. So we have, we haven't looked by city, we've looked more by trying to have demographics of different folks represented. But I would, I would actually have to look at that and be able, to be able to answer that question, I honestly don't know.
Just in view of the statement that the goal is to place people proximate to services and shopping and transit routes, that obviously dictates cities as opposed to rural areas. You would think that cities would be represented on it. I watched a thing on Italy where they built a place out in the middle of nowhere, and it was a gigantic failure for the very reasons that we're talking about, no access to jobs, no access to transportation, no access to services. So I would think cities would be represented in some way, shape, or form on these committees, thanks.
No, that's a good point, I, I agree with you. The location of these services is critical, something that we'll consider.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And now we are going into item number 5B, ODOT summary of I-5, I-205 projects with an emphasis on the Oregon City Westland pedestrian and bridge, bicycle bridge concept plan. I'll turn it over to Gunn Lewis, we have a staff report on that, and then we'll have a presentation of ODOT.
Good afternoon, Commissioner, thank you for your time. We did get, we've been getting updates from ODOT on this project and, and actually other projects. I'm understanding, yeah, we've got Ryan on, Ryan's our Portland Metro Region, Region Manager, and that includes Multnomah County, Clackamas County, Washington County, and Hood River County. So he's got a pretty heavy lift there. He's taken some time out of his schedule to present for us tonight. And I, I know, when, when I wrote the staff report, it was, wasn't exactly sure what Ryan wanted to go, but I kind of got the impression it was, it was a multi-project update with an emphasis on the Oregon City Westland Bike Ped Bridge Concept Plan. So we'll just take it from here, and I think we'll see what, see what, see what he has to offer. So Ryan, you want to take over?
Sure, thanks, John. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Ryan, who, who are you with? Are you Metro or ODOT?
No, I'm Ryan Winshimer, I'm the ODOT Region One Manager.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, and as John described, so I, I'm responsible for Multnomah, Washington, Clackamas, Hood River Counties. And then I work in partnership with the Urban Mobility Office on the projects that they're developing, the I-205 project, Rose Quarter, and some of the larger urban mobility efforts that are going on within the region. But just moving through our slideshow, I'll, I'll have a chance to talk a little bit about that. But first, I just wanted to say thank you for having me here and letting me share a few thoughts, hear some feedback, and then, of course, discuss our concept planning. And I did take some time to meet with the city manager and John, just to go over some of the content. So I, I hope we're really getting it, a number of the issues that you've raised earlier. Let's see, on the next slide, I've invited Mandy Putney, I-205 Project Director, and Lucinda Broussard, who's a tolling project manager, to join us here as well, just to ensure that we can answer any of the questions you may have about any of the three projects, as well as Mark Butoric, our consultant and project manager, who's really running the behind-the-scenes effort on the concept planning on behalf of all of us. And there's also Westland City Councilor Mary Baumgartner, who, you may have a few questions for her at the end of the presentation regarding the status of some of their multimillion-dollar bike pedestrian projects that are happening in the vicinity. So that's just, I asked her if she would mind coming and just being a resource if we have questions about how some of that is coming along, as well as the, the potential for some future joint city meetings to discuss opportunities and trade-offs at the appropriate point in the concept development process. More to come on that in a second, next slide. Today, I want to ensure we have an opportunity to discuss what the conceptual planning effort is and what it's not. Make sure that we have some time for follow-up discussion and next steps. I, I did listen to Mark's presentation here and the feedback you gave him last time. I understand we have quite a bit to talk about and some misunderstandings to clear up. First, I'm going to talk about who's involved in their roles, including your commissioner on the project leadership team and your staff participating in the project management team as well. And Mark may want to jump in there on process, and I'll be asking him to talk about continuing engagement process and public outreach we have planned. We'd also like to discuss how this project aligns with other work happening in the area, with a focus on why now is the right time for this work and an opportune time to be seeking funding from a number of sources that are out there. And of course, if there's time, Mandy and Lucinda are both here to share a little bit about the outreach and upcoming engagement opportunities for their project as well. Next slide, so this, this may be the most important slide for us to understand. This is the leadership team and project management team structure. This is much more than an ODOT effort, and I'll take a moment to discuss the importance of your role in the graphic at the bottom of the slide. First, the two cities in metro, ODOT and county, are all equal partners and have an equal seat at the table. Yes, ODOT's paying for the study, but it's being led by all of us. The purpose is setting up that way is to try to make sure we have the greatest opportunity to develop an outcome that we can all support at the end of the day. That's important, this graphic shows the concept plan isn't for ODOT, it's, it's primarily for local and regional system planning. If at the end of the day, you think the Arch Bridge is sufficient for accommodating bikes and beds between your two cities into the future, and you don't want to pursue an additional bridge, that's your decision. This concept planning effort's intended only to gather information, present it to you and the Westland City Councils for consideration. The decision, again, to adopt it or not is yours. It's in all of our best interests, I think, to work together, try to come to a decision we can agree on and, and begin planning for. More about why that's important now versus waiting another 10 years is in just a couple more slides. Next slide, in addition to state and local government partners, there's many additional interests we have invited to the table to help inform the concept planning. As you know, we've hired Kittleson to facilitate the work. In addition, we've brought, we all rise to ensure that we're elevating voices of equity with a focus on tribal partners who have expressed interest in the project and have strong ties to the area. Of course, we're also including the Chamber of Downtown Association and others, help us under- Uh, of course, we're also including the Chamber of Downtown Association and others, help us understand why, uh, you have many opportunities and trace of the alignments represents. And so, next slide. Uh, my first conversation, um, with your representative on the leadership team, Commissioner McGriff. Uh, she actually explained to me that she walks the bridge every day. And, uh, she thinks it's working for most users, just, just the way it is today. And for the most part, I, I agree with that. Um, similarly, we did, um, when we did the Arch Bridge rehab work. Uh, and we're looking out, you know, ten, fifteen years out to what, you know, is essentially today. We estimated the Arch Bridge could continue to serve in that, uh, primary bike pedestrian capacity, and it has. Uh, later in around, uh, twenty sixteen, as Westland was updating their pedestrian and bike network uh, and their TSP, ODOT began considering, uh, improvements to the Abernathy Bridge and conducted a very high level assessment to consider bicycle and pedestrian alignments parallel to I two oh five. That, uh, analysis at that time was not intended to identify a conceptual alignment alternative. Uh, we knew that in order to do that, we'd need a much more extensive effort and engagement with the tribes, the public process, and of course, your help. Um, in helping us identify the optimal alignment to best serve users into the future and to provide access to community destinations. We did however, and I may need Mandy's help on the details, but we did determine that it was infeasible to add, uh, additional width for the bike pedestrian facility as part of the Abernathy widening and seismic improvements. And while, you know, adding facilities like that to new structures may add cost. Um, developing them and building them is pretty straightforward. Um, in the case of a retrofit, uh, like we're doing here. Uh, the widening and sliding the structure is, is much more complex. So in addition to those factors, adding bike competitive Abernathy Bridge would have also resulted in the longest on and off ramps uh, of any of the locations we looked at due to the ADA grades, uh, the requirements and the height of the bridge. Um, but really the most compelling, um, to most, most compelling reason for not having it on that bridge in addition to safety was that the bike ped advocates that we had at the table felt that it was really a suboptimal user experience, uh, due to being located adjacent to multiple lanes of interstate traffic. The related air and noise concerns, uh, as well as the opportunity for, uh, an alternative structure between the Abernathy Bridge. You know, fails to provide, uh, you know, could provide better access to parks and other desirable destinations like businesses, jobs, et cetera. Uh, in fact, Westland is planning a two-way bikeway on the Lamont Falls Drive instead of on the interstate. There's also evidence that points to, uh, better connection opportunities used to the Abernathy Bridge for, uh, many of the same reasons. In, uh, summer of twenty nineteen, we did a policymakers' ride where we invited, um, a number of, uh, elected officials interested in, in bike ped, um, to go on a ride with us. And at that time, them as well as regional and local staff expressed, expressed a shared interest in a better connection for people who walk and bike across the Lamont River. The opportunity to make the connection users would view as a destination for views and the experience, not just any connection, but the right connection. That was also when ODOT began considering providing some funding to help identify the right location and inform future development opportunities. So, uh, today, Westland's in the process of building, as I described before, billions of dollars of infrastructure that's going to point bikes and pads, uh, to the Arch Bridge. A new multi-use path along Highway forty-three that, uh, ODOT's provided some funding for design. Uh, Westland is, uh, also providing funding for design and construction, a two-way, uh, cycle track on the Lamont Falls Drive. Um, again, now seems like a good time to be in considering, uh, conceptual plans for what that new crossing plan may look like in a local, in a local plan. And while ODOT is providing money for the work, our hope is the planning process will help you and other regional partners confirm the need to identify a crossing, um, and whether at the end of the day, you and Westland decide an additional crossing is necessary or not uh, to serve your development plans into the future, that's, that's going to be your decision. Um, ODOT's role here is really to help inform and facilitate, um, facilitate that discussion. Reason number two that now is the time is funding. Without an adopted plan, it's extremely difficult to get grant funding for design or to get development to accommodate landing locations and good connections. Wilsonville, uh, got some M-Tip money and is building, and is doing the environmental work, I should say, for the French Prairie Bridge. Um, they're also seeking a congressional earmark funding for, uh, a bridge over I five that's connecting both sides of their community. The city of Portland is constructing a bike ped bridge over four oh five right now with Connect Oregon funding. Um, and the Oregon Transportation Commission, uh, my bosses just recently dedicated eighty-one million dollars for local bike system, uh, improvements. For, and that's just on a local system, um, that eighty-one million dollars. And so we need to start programming that funds, uh, for the years twenty-four to twenty-seven. Uh, as we, we're just starting that process. So again, now is a good time to sort of be in line and be thinking about, uh, pulling together an application for that. But again, we need to have an adopted plan to be eligible. So that's important. Um, next slide, here's a, a map of some of the planned transportation improvements, as well as some of the redevelopment. Oregon City and Westland, uh, have done a great job of planning bike facilities on both sides of the river. Uh, but the main gap is this, uh, Lamont Falls crossing currently being served by the Arch Bridge. Shoreline Properties and Lamont Falls Legacy Process, Project are going to create additional destinations and generate more demand uh, to provide walking, biking facilities. Um, but if we wait until they're built and the demand is noticeable, there may be fewer options to consider. So again, I think now is a good time to be at least thinking about it, uh, looking at the options and making a decision one way or another. Um, as I described, it's, it's up to you. Um, and so I guess those, those are a number of the things I just, I wanted to share as it relates to this project. Really, um, again, asking for your, um, your help and engagement in that process. Um, and, and, and as we continue to move forward, making sure that we're getting, um, your feedback about, about this and making sure that you're feeling engaged, that your staff's giving you the information you need from this process. And, and frankly inviting you, uh, into the process, uh, if you'd like to attend more of these meetings or briefings. Um, we'd be happy to, happy to continue to do that. And I also, uh, so going to the next slide, um, I'd like, you know, to have Mark work with your staff. Um, if, it's something you're interested in and pulling together a joint work session between you, uh, and the Westland City Council to talk about the needs of your two communities, uh, the opportunities and considerations. Um, and I'm interested in hearing from you. If you feel like that's a good idea, are there better ways we can engage you? And so that's, that's really where, uh, I wanted to end my presentation. I, I do have, uh, the upcoming public engagement opportunities for the Westland Bike Ped Concept Planning Effort. Uh, they're up on the screen. Um, and then of course, as I mentioned before, I do have Mandy, uh, and Lucinda here to talk about the I two oh five improvements, the tolling project, and Mark here to talk more about engagement and, uh, bike ped. If you'd like to hear from them.
All right, um, I'm going to start off. Um, and what I want to say is something that I've said in the past at these meetings. I'm going to define a word, or I'm going to define a, a concept that I have, which is sidebar meetings. I don't like sidebar meetings. Sidebar meetings are meetings where, um, we, we as city commissioners, our time is very valuable. We barely sometimes every night get through our entire agenda. Um, and we don't want to hear the same thing five times. Um, and when we have a meeting, um, in terms of an important project like this where you say you want to hear our feedback and we have given you a feedback in at least two meetings or three meetings or four meetings, some of which that you didn't even show up for as staff. And then when you realize that we're not in favor of it or have concerns about it, then we have to have a second meeting or another sidebar meeting for you to explain everything that we already know, which is what you did tonight. There was nothing new here. There's nothing that we don't know. It's just that you watched the meeting last month and realized that, wow, we don't have, um, you know, we don't have the support on this and clearly we must be not educating them. And so now we sit through another presentation where we didn't get anything new. Um, and so that's a sidebar meeting. It means another meeting that we don't get anything new because you missed a meeting where we were talking about it. Um, and, and that to me doesn't build, um, a partnership. It doesn't build, um, the appearance that you want to have, which is that you're taking our, um, you know, thoughts into consideration and it's wasting our time. Um, and, and so, um, it doesn't really, you know, the, what, what needs to happen is you need to be proactive about getting our input and involvement instead of, you know, reactive. Um, and, you know, quite frankly, if you haven't figured out right now that pretty much most of us don't believe there's a need for a new bridge. Then you probably have already heard what we've said and, and I'm really not sure why we're here tonight. Um, I have a couple of questions. Um, and if you did watch the last meeting, I mean, we have lots of concerns. Um, or at least you could have came back and responded to the concerns that we brought. Visibility of the Lamont Falls, the, the site, and why this hasn't been discussed at the projects for the Lamont Falls project. Or really a better explanation as to why we're spending so much money on the I two oh five bridge where we couldn't put a bike lane down the center. You talked about ramps, but we haven't seen anything to really illustrate that that's a fact. Um, and, um, so those are all the questions that we're kind of wondering about. Um, you know, yes, we can still walk a bike across the Oregon City Westland Bridge. Yes, we can still walk across it. Do we really need a brand new bridge? In adding to that, I want to ask a question that's very specific. What happened with the sharrows?
So thanks for that, that feedback. I think that's what I was trying to do, uh, in providing you a little bit more information about the why around the I two oh five bridge. And if, if there's other information you'd like on that, I'd be happy to provide it to you. Uh, that's what I'm trying to understand is how can we, how can we better engage you and how can we, um, how can we do that? And how can we engage you in this process and make sure you're getting the information that, that you do want? So I'm sorry if you, uh, didn't feel like I provided that. I, I did attempt to do that.
I mean, the only answer I really, uh, I can see or hear is the, the, the off-ramps and stuff for, for not having the expansion of the bridge. But I mean, when we, when you look at it, and I've brought this up, when you have supports of the bridge that go thirty feet beyond the bridge on both sides, which is an eyesore in itself, and you can't put paths on them, and you have a gap in the center that you can't put a pass on. I guess rideability and whatever, but if you're going across the Oregon City Westland Bridge on a bike, um, you know, and you're walking your bike going through the center of a freeway or a separate lane is probably, you know, a better option. Um, but back to my actual question, which was where are the sharrows?
Uh, I, I don't know where the sharrows are. Are you, are there sharrows that were on the Arch Bridge that have now worn? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, for people that don't know what sharrows are, sharrows are bike lanes that share, um, traffic lanes with vehicles. And after the exceptionally huge amount of money that was spent on renovating the Arch Bridge to what is a beautiful bridge and has always been a beautiful bridge. After the bridge closer, closure, there were sharrows installed on Main Street and on the Arch Bridge allowing bicycles to ride across the Arch Bridge in the traffic lane. Now that was in two thousand twelve, and that was the response and ODOT's response to dealing with the pedestrian and, and, um, bicycle connection between the two cities. Then they disappeared. With no explanation of why they disappeared. Um, and in fact, I actually had to second guess myself to say, well, did there, was there actually sharrows on the bridge? And I looked it up, and of course, there's this big article from Bike Portland, um, that talks about, oh, finally, ODOT listened to us. They put, um, sharrows on the bridge and all this success and, and, and then they're gone. And now we have to build a brand new bridge to fix the problem. Um, that's not listening. That's not, that's not, um, you know, i- if, if there was some reason that those disappeared at one point, that, why wasn't that a conversation? Um, so I, I
Yeah, and I, I, I appreciate you bringing that up. I'm happy to look into that. And if it's a, if it's a maintenance issue and they simply haven't been restored, I'd be happy to make sure that those get repainted.
Well, okay, but it's not just be repainted. It's like, maybe that's the solution. Maybe we already have the solution and yet we've spent all this money in meetings talking about a new solution and we have to build a bridge. The bridge is already there.
No, that's, and that's, that's perfectly acceptable. I, I appreciate your feedback. That's what I'm asking for. And, and, uh, repainting the sharrows and see how that works. And if we feel like that's, that's all that needs to be done. Um, again, I, I, I was trying to point out very clearly as well, uh, you know, this is going to be your decision. And if it's, if your decision is you think that that bridge works fine, um, okay. We'll accept that.
All right, on a separate, separate topic that I'll throw out, um, I want to know that we definitely, as two communities, Oregon City and Westland, as you might have heard at the beginning of the meeting, love our history. And that bridge is a very important piece of the history of these two cities, and it's celebrating a hundred years next year. And so I want to make sure that our ODOT is working with Oregon City and Westland to figure out a, an important and a substantial celebration for the Oregon City Westlands Bridge Hundred Year in twenty twenty-two. Um, Commissioner McGriff.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, I just wanted to, to, uh, add a couple of things to the conversation. So I am the City of Oregon City's representative on the, uh, Bike Ped Project along with, um, our community partner, uh, Mary Baumgartner from Westland. So we have been, um, talking since she was appointed to the committee and, um, working together on trying to understand all the processes and programs that are currently involved. Uh, we had discussed from day one, a future possible meeting with their council and our council in terms of discussing where our positions are. At this point in time, Mary's reporting back to her council and I'm reporting back to you. I would also like to add that our staff, uh, Dana Webb and John Lewis and myself are meet on a regular basis to review the material, talk about the material. We're, we're kind of in a little bit of a lull right now. We, we have a meeting coming up, but there, we're not at a decision-making point uh, in terms of, of my bringing back any sort of recommendation from Oregon City. I think you all, the four of you, three of you know what my feeling is at this point, and there's still more information to be, to be gained. So I think in terms of where we are, uh, we do have some strong opinions about it. They are aware. I have also repeated those conversations in our, uh, project leadership meeting, and I repeated them in our, um, PAC meeting. So at this point in time, we're not at a decision-making point. We're not at a point to where I think we as a city feel comfortable, uh, again, I'm making all the efforts possible to make sure that we are in conversation with our partners in Westland. I, Mary may be on, may be on the call and may want to, um, add to what I have already imparted to you. But you're, you are correct, Commissioner Smith, there really isn't anything new at this point, uh, for us to be to be doing anything other than taking the information in and processing it and looking at what is going to work best in terms of our community.
Um, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Well, I'll say this, I'm, I'm, I'm glad Mr. Winshimer took the time to watch the previous meeting. And I hope every ODOT attendee here tonight took the same time because it was very revealing. And I hesitate to repeat all the things we dealt with. I'm kind of curious, usually when we get called upon to, to do traffic changes, we talk in terms of failed intersections. Is there any data that shows that the current bridge is not capable of handling the volume of foot or bike traffic that now exists or in, uh, between the two cities of Westland and Oregon City?
Mark, do you want to talk about the data?
Uh, yeah, um, can everybody hear me all right?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, again, Mark Batoric with Kittles and Associates, uh, project manager. Um, yeah, there's a few things with the current bridge that aren't, uh, up to today's standard. Obviously, the bridge is, uh, uh, old as we all know, uh, and coming up on its hundredth, um, uh, year anniversary. Uh, from, uh, American Disabilities Act, uh, it doesn't comply with that, uh, today from a, a person rolling, um, or with, uh, some sort of, uh, needs from that standpoint, uh, from a bicycle standpoint as, um, needs from that standpoint, uh, from a bicycle standpoint as, um, um, was mentioned earlier, there's, uh, not bike lanes out there. And even with sheros, it's a small percentage of the population that is comfortable using that. We call those kind of the, the fearless type riders, and that's about five to ten percent of our population. The, the big percentage of, of our population and, um, Commissioner McGriff and Baumgartner will be giving memos uh, here in the next week that kind of lays through all this, is we're trying to get the, the people, the sixty percent that would be comfortable going back and across the Willamette River. Uh, so if you think for a moment, if you have a young child, uh, say, uh, five to twelve, would you be comfortable walking or driving or riding a bike across the bridge? Probably not. If you're a little bit more on the, um, uh, older side of the spectrum, would you be comfortable riding a bike across that bridge? Probably not. So while you can get across there, uh, from a bicycle standpoint, the data really shows about ten percent of the population is really willing to attempt that and be comfortable at doing it. On the pedestrian side, a larger piece, if you're, you're an able-bodied and can walk, definitely, uh, it's doable. Commissioner McGriff, I think, does it very regularly, uh, and that's very easy for that, that group. But if you're in a, a wheelchair or have a disability, the, the slope, uh, going across the width um, makes that more difficult. So you have to take that all in consideration. Is that the highest and best priority of a need within the community from a bike ped standpoint of the two communities? Maybe, maybe not. Is it ideal? No, it's not ideal today.
See, that begs a question about volume and, and, and the number of people that use that and the number of bicycles. And are you willing to walk your bicycle across the probably sixty-yard span that that entails? And, uh, the slope is, is not gonna change. My problem with the whole concept is this House Bill twenty seventeen, it, when you read it, it looks like a bill not only in search of projects, but in search of funding, and, and I don't see the established need for this. The ped traffic volume isn't established. I, and I honestly don't feel like we're partners with ODOT whatsoever. And, and quite honestly, I, I'm not one to shoot the messenger and and you probably have to be fairly brave to come before this commission if you viewed the prior exchanges. But I feel like the ODOT talks at us and not to us. Um, I don't understand this deal about, and actually, this is the first time that I heard from Mr. Winchimer that if we don't want to pursue this bridge, we don't have to. And that is the first time those words have been uttered ever. I don't understand the why, as one with an engineering background and having seen the Sam Jackson Bridge and also having seen another presentation by ODOT in front of, uh, we're on the waterboard, Commissioner Rocky Smith and I, talking about spanning a major waterline with a lot more weight than any individual rider or walker, putting that between the north and south lanes. Why can there not be a walking lane above that as there is on the, the Sam Jackson Bridge? And also, when we looked at the drawings of this bridge with those extensions, it's like, why can we not put a walking or riding path on those? So this, to me, it doesn't make sense to have to build the structure to support a bridge when you've already got that in this bridge. I'm not sure. I, I, I disbelieve what I'm being told. And the concept that we were shown, I can't see how that can be a cost-effective concept because the most favored concept that we were shown involved, uh, an elevation that was such that when you got to the Westland side, you had to use essentially a tower or elevator to attain the, the elevation that you needed. So, you know, and we talked about in the previous meeting, which I used to tell me, watch the impact on the view of the falls, which is critical to us and critical to our future. And, uh, you know, I just, I, I just don't feel good about this at all. And, and it seems like the ODOT approach until tonight, when you said we have the final say as communities, I've never heard the fact that we could say yea or nay to this, and I, I, it seems like a project without a need. So I'll leave it at that.
I, I appreciate, I appreciate that feedback, and, um, I will see if I can, uh, have Mandy's group pull together a little bit more information on, on what they looked at, um, on that two oh five analysis. I had the pleasure of walking the waterline underneath the bridge, uh, this afternoon with Lance Calvert from uh, City of West Lynn, and it's, it's quite a hike. It's a, it's a long span. Uh, and then of course, getting on and off, uh, the safety issues around the, the ramps. There's, there's a number of challenges there that, that you may not think about at first glance, but, but really are there. So I, I would be happy to try to bring you back some additional information on that, uh, as well.
Well, what, what, what I personally don't want is, don't try to convince me. I mean, I see the Sam Jackson Bridge, and I see, I think it's seventeen hundred fifty feet long with a slope to it. And I see people using that all the time on that center span, and we're about to push the lanes outboard and give ourselves the opportunity to build the, the very similar walking path. And yet we're saying, well, we have to build something independent that's gonna require a supporting structure or some structure of some kind, whether it be suspension or from underneath. It, it honestly just doesn't ring true to me. So I'll leave you with those thoughts, and again, I'm not here to shoot the messenger, but I'm, I'm just not, not feeling good about ODOT's approach to things. They, they come here and say, and again, until tonight, it's like, here's five choices. You might not like any of them. Uh, pick, pick the one that offends you the least. I think the technical term was least sucky from somebody else that was talking about it. But, um, that's where I stand on it, and I want you to carry that message back. Thanks.
Yeah, thank, thank you. And, and I did, I did, I think I did hear that term as well. Um, and then, you know, just in terms of, you, you were pretty clear too about not wanting to close the, the bridge to vehicle traffic and use it as a, as a bike ped option, and, and we heard that and, uh, took that off the table as well. So it, it, it really is, we are really trying to, uh, figure out how to work with you as a partner to, to figure out a solution. So thanks for your feedback.
Um, and really quick, I want to clarify the, um, kind of the follow-up of, from Commissioner O'Donnell. Um, so I, I get why, um, although, so my first, my first question, the first presentation of the I two oh five Abernathy Bridge, um, renovation was, you know, the extension of those supports, and I get that those, so, the new supports have to be extended way beyond the bridge because they have to be built so that the old supports can be taken out. I get that. Um, so I don't necessarily need an explanation of why the supports are the way they are. It's really more about now that you have these giant supports that go way beyond the bridge itself and look just ridiculous. Um, why can't that just be a place for something that's used? Because I even asked the question, well, okay, since those supports go, and I don't know what the measurement is, but it's, it's huge beyond, uh, the actual traffic lanes, those supports go way beyond that. And so in looking at it first, I thought, oh, well, that's for extra capacity so they can add another lane in the future, or ten years, or not twenty years? For, and no, it's not. They would still not be used that way. So, um, it seems weird to have those supports that go way beyond the bridge and not use them for something. That's really my, my question. Uh, all right, Commissioner Lyle Smith.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, it sounds like, uh, if I were to try to sum up maybe some comments of what you're, of what you're hearing. Um, obviously, there's a, a no-build alternative. If you're looking for doing concept plans, you're looking at alternatives, there's a no-build alternative. And then there's a couple of other alternatives of new alignments. Um, the one question is, maybe to satisfy this commission, could you add an alternative? Maybe using, um, previously documented information on, that would consider an I two oh five um, crossing as one of the alternatives, um, with a bike ped somewhere. You know, it, it sounds like you've done the study of why or why not that can't be possible, whether that's an inside, inside lane or outside lane, or, or, or what the reasoning for that, that, that may help the conversation. Um, so there seems to be a lot of interest around that. Um, I will say, um, that does make sense from the standpoint of, you know, if we just want a pedestrian bridge that is, um, easier to use, safer to use, they don't compete with cars. So you're, you could have families going across it, you could, you know, kids on tricycles. You could have your, your, your roadies who ride forty or fifty miles. Those are the brave ones generally who are willing to cross the, the current bridge, um, because they do ride in the, in the roadways. Um, and, but it sounds like the, the purpose and the vision for this other bridge is really to attract a different audience. Um, it's to be inclusive of, um, multiple ages, multiple levels of riders, multiple pedestrian types, uh, folks with disabilities. And so when I listen to what's being said, that's what I hear as the purpose. Now, whether or not there's, whether or not we, we think it's warranted or is needed, or, or we have the appetite to, to get funding for that type of amenity, I do think it would be an amenity um, for Oregon City and between Oregon City and Westland. Whether or not all the pieces can come together and we can find an alternative or whatever, um, that's to be determined. And so, um, anyway, I just want to share that, that's kind of where I'm at. I, I feel like I see where you're going and maybe some, um, provide an alternative or maybe to add an alternative to satisfy the questions about I two oh five. Um, my question was about your slide on, um, the upcoming open house. Um, and, um, you had two present, there you go. Um, there was an open house in the online briefing. Um, can you, I guess, just let us know as soon as that online open house is scheduled? It looks like it's not scheduled yet, um, because it would be good to really get that advertised and out to folks, um, so that they can participate. Um, I was in, just, I just asking for confirmation that I'm interpreting that correctly. The date hasn't been picked yet.
Mark, um, my understanding is that online open house is gonna be open on the, through, through all of those days.
Oh, okay, I got you.
Yeah, that, that's correct. Um, starting, uh, early next week, there's gonna be advertising in both, um, community papers. There'll be online advertising. Uh, we've worked with the staff of both cities, uh, for their newsletters. So a lot of publication is going out. And as Ryan mentioned, that online open house will run continuously from, uh, March twenty-ninth through April thirteenth. And then with an online live briefing Q and A session on April sixth. Um, as part of that, you're gonna see a lot, a lot of the, the questions you have tonight. There's a series of three memos that are coming out, but probably more importantly, the virtual open house will have uh, both fly-throughs, um, of all, all the bridge alignments, the top five that we've discussed. It will have view sheds, so if you were down by the falls looking downstream, how does each one of those bridges look? If you were downtown, uh, how would they look? If you were up on, uh, the bluff looking down, how would they look? So you'll, you'll be able to see these bridges pretty much from any, any view, uh, in a virtual reality, real world setting. Everything has been, uh, designed to what, uh, is out there and, uh, will give you a really good sense as well as the community, what these look like and what their impact is. Um, I think, um, like we mentioned last time, I think there's a lot of perceptions, uh, and some of the perceptions don't, uh, line up with realities. We're hoping this will, uh, provide and shed some light on that. Um, and back to, uh, uh, one of the earlier Commissioner O'Donnell's, uh, questions and comments on the I two oh five bridge, there's a memo that Commissioner McGriff will be getting, uh, early next week that, uh, goes through in pretty good detail on exactly why, um, the two oh five isn't a feasible option. I can give you a sense as, as the engineers went through that, and all the different trade-offs, became fairly clear that even if you could live with the trade-offs of the, the longer ramps and all the, all the other things, is the cost was potentially a magnitude or two higher than the cost of the bridges that we're looking at today. So when you added all that up, and this law is all documented, uh, for you guys to look at, uh, and will be available starting next week, you'll see kind of the, the thought process that's gone, been gone through to kind of, uh, that's come to that conclusion. You know, to spend twice as much money to build a bridge on two oh five, which may not be the greatest experience to build something that can attract, uh, seventy, eighty percent of the population in a different environment, that's the type of, uh, uh, logical sequence that you'll see laid out in these memos coming up next week. So it's coming. Uh, we realize there's a lot of questions, but, uh, a lot of this information, as Commissioner McGriff referred to, is there's been a little bit of law for the, uh, engineers and planners to go through all the analysis. And, uh, you'll start seeing all that here over the next two to three weeks, and we'll be back, uh, in, uh, late April to meet with you and give another briefing with this group, um, on the findings of the open house.
And Mark, I just, I don't want to overpromise on, on these, uh, these visualizations. This, this planning, this concept planning effort is about alignments and trying to look at, you know, where might a good alignment be? Uh, but it's, it's not intended to get to the, you know, is it a, is it a cable stay? Is it a, you know, what does the design look like? What are the, uh, so, so I don't want you to get, uh, you know, too caught up in exactly what it looks like on there, uh, in terms of design, because there's, there's still, you know, that's, that's a whole nother level of effort. This is really just about alignment.
Yeah, great point.
All right, I think our city manager has his hand up first. Tony?
Well, thank you. Uh, could we go back one slide, please, to the, oh, the, the, thank you. Um, first off, I, you know, I appreciate the comments that the commissioners are, are, are bringing forward and, you know, understand the frustrations. Um, I really do want to thank Ryan. Um, you know, I think I had a conversation with him. We had a really good conversation. And really trying to find, you know, how can we, how can we reset this and, and get to the questions that are needed? Because, um, there are, there are immediate needs, there are immediate concerns, and then there are those longer-term ones. And, you know, Ryan had talked about the opportunity for potentially the Westland Council and the, um, Oregon City City Commission to get together. Because while we're, we're neighbors and we know a lot what's going on, just looking at this map, when you think about the development opportunities that exist on both sides of the river, just in this proximity, not counting in Oregon City, the Cove, um, Rossman Landfill, and there may be other developments in West Lynn that we might not know about. And then also Ryan talked about, you know, the significant investment that's going into not only the transportation network for vehicles, but also from the bike ped standpoint that, that, that we're gonna see on the other side of the river. And we've made similar investments from the Clackamas River through the Cove, through Clackamas Park. You know, we've got significant planning that we've done to get up on top of McLaughlin Promenade to connect to the Canema Bluffs area. You know, that's part of a regional network. And, you know, uh, Ryan, you know, did a great job talking about, you know, the planning work that goes into this and why it's necessary to get into the queue. You know, one thing I want to talk a little bit more is just when we think twenty years down the road, you know, just from a tourism and economic development standpoint, um, thank you, West Lynn. We have a, you know, when things were booming, you know, I think we had some parking over on their side, and I saw multiple people parking on the Westland side and walking across the bridge. So think about that if the old city hall district redevelops and the Westland paper, uh, waterfront project takes off and Willamette Falls Legacy Project is going, you know, just from the opportunity of which we're all concerned about in terms of the number of trips coming into downtown, you know, being able to have a, you know, a telecom bridge-type connection, which in and of itself is a tourism draw, um, that then reduces trips. So I, 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 I think Ryan fully appreciates the frustration of this commission, but I truly, truly believe that we're trying to reset, because this really is a wonderful opportunity to really think long-term about, you know, what this could do for both communities as well as connecting a regional bike ped system that, you know, this is one of the points that's really, really difficult to get across. So, um, I just wanted to kind of hit on the, the long-term tourism, economic development, um, component that, that, that I, I do see as an opportunity that, you know, is a goal right now for us as a, as a community. And if we do it well, you know, this is just another attractor opportunity potentially. So, thank you.
All right, um, Counselor Mary Baumgartner from West Lynn.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate all of the, um, well, first of all, I should ask, can people hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, all of the input from our Oregon City neighbors is very critical for me to hear. Um, and I haven't honestly been on this project for very long. So, um, forgive me for not being as up to speed, maybe as some of the Oregon City Commissioners are. Um, I do agree with, um, City Manager Conkles' observations about the future potential for this connection. But I, um, also, it was speaking with our staff today, Eric Eric Lace and John Williams and Lance Calvert communicated with me by email. And we just want to be careful that we move forward in a thoughtful way. There's a lot of components to take into account. The landings among many elements. And as far as the property ownership of these various landing potential sites, and that's just one minor point, I mean, not minor, but one point to consider. So I just, I'm, I'm very excited about multimodal transportation myself. I, I think that it's an excellent vision. I just want to be proceeding in the right time, timeframe on this project. And I'm excited to just continue to learn more about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Well, I will say, Commissioner or Counselor Baumgartner touched upon it. The elevation changes about where we land on either side and the landings are critical. And I, I want to compliment Ryan for for keeping us grounded. These concepts, I mean, the last concept, when we talk about bridge crossing, what we usually see is a line drawn across the river. And the last time we talked about, okay, here's one upriver of the, of the existing arch bridge. And how is it supported? Is it a suspension bridge? Is, you know, what, what does, what effect does that have on our view of the falls? So we have to be careful with these concepts. And if they're not developed fully, nobody should say, yeah, that's a good place for it. Because unless you've got some anti-gravity devices, that thing has to be held up somehow. So, and in the end, you know, I, I mean, again, I look at this bill and what's the source of funding? I mean, at this point, we're just talking about a study, but if it became a reality, and in deference to, to City Manager Conkle, at some future point, it may serve us well. But we can't do this in a vacuum where we put this, if we were to do this, we put it somewhere only to realize it doesn't maximize, it doesn't serve us to the maximum possible because we're going to do developments on both sides of the river. So in the end, I, I struggle with the concept drawings. I struggle with the fact that I know by virtue of sitting on a South Fork waterboard, we're talking about, I think a thirty inch pipe suspended on that center span of that bridge at over eight pounds per gallon. If it can handle that, it can handle a walkway with an occasional point load of somebody walking or a bike or what, driving a bike across it. So there's a lot to be said, and I guess you're going to have to, to show me. So I'll leave it at that. Thanks, Ryan.
Counselor Baumgartner, or did you have another comment?
Oh, sorry, no.
Okay, I just checking. Okay. And then to, to, to move to the next topic, or before we move to the next don't get our silence on the tolling tonight to give you any impression on how we feel about that. We feel, yeah, that's a whole nother topic.
Okay. The one thing I did, one thing I, I did hear, you know, was this, was that you guys wanted to make sure that, you know, you had the opportunity to talk to all of us. And so we are all here. There's, if there is something, if you go back to the slide, Sandra, about the opportunities, maybe, maybe just sharing these with you. I don't know if you, if you wanted Mandy to walk you through any two oh five or had any comments on tolling, we're all here. But if you'd like to set up a separate time or engage you in a different way, I'd be happy to do that.
I guess I will say, I do appreciate the fact that ODOT's learning because this is the first time you've brought these all at one item, as if they were linked together somehow. Prior to tonight, we've been giving, giving them at piecemeal in, in, you know, and it's very, I'm curious if to, are all these, if you, in the past, when we first, when we first were aware of the tolling idea, and prior to that, when we were first made aware of the I two oh five improvements, because the first, first really topic that came to us was the I two oh five improvements, when we're talking about John Storm Park and all of those issues. If you went to the I two oh five improvement website at that time, there was nothing about tolling, and there was no link to the tolling page. And if you went to the tolling project, there was no reference to the Abernathy Bridge project and no connection. Now I'm seeing that, you know, you're at least presenting them kind of together. Is there a way that any one citizen, if they go to one of these things, realizes that, oh, it's not just one thing, it's five things, and they're all intertwined. And we're not piecemealing it so that we kind of fly under the radar, that we're actually communicating to the public. This is all one thing. That, that, that needs to happen, and it hasn't as, as of yet, to, to my degree of knowledge. Commissioner McGriff has her hand.
I, I just wanted to quickly, quickly respond to that and, and let you know that, you know, at, at first, they were not all linked either. The two oh five project was, was not started in terms of the design process and what that was going to be. We didn't have a funding strategy for that yet, and, and so it wasn't tolling. HB twenty seventeen and our additional conversations with the legislature have, have started to push that project in that direction. In fact, when I presented to the legislature a couple of years ago on the two oh five project, when we were working on cost to complete, we had a variety of, of funding strategies that were presented at that time. And, and tolling has, has evolved since then. And, and, but your point is well taken that the websites need to be interlinked or connected or have links to each other. And, and that's a problem we can solve as well. So thank you for, thank you for that.
Yeah, so I'm looking at it right now, and it's still, you know, still the same. All right, Commissioner.
Mr. President, I just wanted to say, you know, thank you to everybody who came tonight. I don't think we have enough bandwidth to discuss tolling. All the other things we have on the agenda. So it's, it's appreciative that the staff came. I think tolling in itself is a whole nother ball of wax. And I don't think we're prepared to, to, to discuss that tonight. We have a couple of other things on the agenda. So on behalf of your project leadership team member, thank you for coming. And I'm sure Commissioner Smith will say the same as well. Thank you, Mary, for stepping in.
Yes, I do want to thank you, and I, I do hope we hear back from you on how the two cities and ODOT can partner on a celebration of this amazing historic bridge next year.
I wrote that down, Commissioner, Commissioner President, thank you. I will, I will make sure we follow up with that on that. And thank you for having us.
Thank you. All right.
And Commissioner President Rocky Smith, we do have a public comment related to this presentation. And they're on the line. Did you want to take that public comment now?
I guess we can. We don't normally do that for presentations. I thought we were going to do it by public comment, but that's fine. And I have the name right. It's Ray Atkinson, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, state your name and city of residence, please.
Hello, this is Ray Atkinson. I live in Oregon City's Gaffin Lane neighborhood. While I serve on the Transportation Advisory Committee, I am speaking as a resident of Oregon City. I support planning and building the Oregon City Westland pedestrian bicycle bridge because I did not feel safe or comfortable walking or biking on the arch bridge. Sheros and narrow sidewalks on its bridge do not make me feel safe. In addition to improving safety, I want to improve economic development along Main Street. During my focus group for the project on March first, several people focused on how they want to, the Oregon City Bridgehead to be located on the west side of nine nine E north of the arch bridge. This concerned me because nine nine E is a barrier for people walking and biking to access Main Street. Since downtown small businesses have been suffering during the COVID restrictions, I want to use the bridge to encourage people to support downtown small businesses. I'm concerned locating the Oregon City Bridgehead on the west side of nine nine E would encourage people to easily bypass Main Street by using the existing trail on the west side of nine nine E. I believe this would prevent the city commission from achieving its twenty nineteen, or the first goal in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty one goals, which is to cultivate an environment for successful economic development. Due to how nine nine E currently creates safety and convenience barriers, convenience barriers in some of the proposed bridgeheads being located on the west side of nine nine E. I am also concerned about the city commission being able to achieve its third goal, which is to enhance the livability of the community. Even if bridge users want to access Main Street, crossing nine nine E is currently a challenge because motorists are not always looking for people who are walking or biking. In addition, the walk signals to cross nine nine E sometimes take forever to activate and don't stay activated for long enough. The walk signal timing issue shows me that motorists are prioritized along nine nine E. I'm not sure whether these issues will be resolved if the Oregon City Bridgehead is located on the west side of nine nine E. I believe the bridge option that goes over nine nine E and connects to the Main Street will best support the city commission's first and third goals. Look forward to continuing to work with you to plan the new bridge. Thank you for, for your time.
Ray, thank you. All right, we are now at the moment where we adopt the agenda for this evening. Adopt the agenda and consent agenda, items six and seven. Is there anything? It looks like a pretty short consent agenda. So is there?
I would so move. We adopt the consent agenda.
Okay. Okay, moved and seconded.
Thank you for the excellent minutes, Katie.
Commissioner Denise McGriff.
Hi.
Commissioner Rachel Lyle Smith.
Hi.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell.
Hi.
And Commissioner President Rocky Smith.
Hi.
Motion passes.
No other issues with the agenda this evening?
Nope.
All right, we'll move on to item eight. It's a public hearing, although the public hearing was closed. So it's a continuation of the public hearing that we had at our last meeting. The, so we will not be taking public comment this evening. Our city attorney will go over some of the ex parte issues or possible issues. And then our staff, Pete Walter, will make a presentation.
Thank you. So, as the Commissioner President, President explained, the record of this proceeding is closed. So it is not a public hearing. The purpose of this meeting is to adopt findings consistent with your tentative decision at your last meeting. So I need to ask if anybody, any of the commissioners have any ex parte contacts, conflicts of interest or bias to declare since the last meeting.
I do not.
I've not spoken with anyone about this particular issue, nor have I had any contact with anyone. And obviously, I drive Warner Parrot and Warner Milley all the time, so I've been by there a lot.
I don't see any, and then I assume our attorney will ask if there's any issues with that.
Anyone have any objections? I'm not seeing anything, but Jacob, help me out if you're seeing something that would indicate that somebody wants to speak with respect only to the disclosures that the commissioners made.
Not seeing anything.
Okay, Mr. Walter or Ms. Turway?
Good evening, Commissioners. This is Pete Walter, Senior Planner. So on March third, the city commission deliberated about this appeal. Here I am. Hi. And this is AP twenty one oh one, appeal of GLUA twenty twenty. Staff has prepared revised final findings. And those are the supplemental final findings in your packet. They address the approval criteria in the Oregon City Municipal Code upon which the March third decision is based. That report addresses the following issues, which were pertaining to the application and provide the basis for the requirement for a twenty-foot setback, while also ensuring that the additional, remaining additional code requirements continue to be met. Three main issues are that the, the commission agreed with the appellate that the building mass and reduced setbacks altered the neighborhood character in a way that impairs neighborhood aesthetics and livability. They also felt that expanding the front setback would comply with the residential setback requirement as well as continue to meet non-residential design standards. It does result in the need to remove two parking stalls. We estimate two parking stalls in front of the building. But that should continue to comply with our parking standard minimum and maximum requirements. And then we have added four conditions of approval. Those are conditions thirty seven through forty. Condition thirty seven, the applicant shall comply with the twenty-foot setback required within the R ten low-density residential zoning district. Condition thirty eight, the applicant shall remove any parking spaces in front of a building within the twenty-foot setback and provide additional landscaping and pedestrian amenity elements in the additional setback area. The applicant shall provide a new calculation of parking, showing that the minimum and maximum number of parking spaces conforms to OCMC seventeen fifty-two oh two oh based on revisions to the square footage of the building and number of beds affected by the increased setback. Condition thirty nine, the applicant shall propose one additional element within the front setback area, which will add to the existing proposal for four. And those, that one additional element may be one of the following, element two, which would be cobbled, patterned or paved stone or enhanced concrete. Element four, sculpture or public art. Element five, fountains, water feature. Or element seven, outdoor cafe. And finally, condition forty, that the revised plans for the bidding shall continue to comply with the institutional design standards in our, in our code. Staff's recommendation is that city commission adopt the supplemental final findings and affirm the planning commission's January eleventh, twenty twenty one decision approving the application with the attached conditions of approval as modified by the city commission. And the public hearing and record for this are closed. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
All right, questions or direction from the commission? Commissioner Lyle Smith.
Thank you. I only have one question, and maybe I just am not remembering from our last meeting. The criteria thirty nine, where did those four elements come from and?
They are right out of the city code.
Okay.
So it specifies that normally an institutional building is required to be built right on the street. And for each additional five foot of setback that an applicant requests, they're required to select one element off this list in the code of one through nine. And so those are from that list, and they don't include things that are already proposed. But we did want to leave some choice for the applicant to propose something for approval by the Community Development Director in their revision.
But didn't we kind of go back and forth on whether or not this was institutional residential? I mean, we're making them do a residential setback. And then we're flipping back to institutional for requiring sculpture or public art, which we wouldn't require, I don't think, for a residential facility.
Well, I believe that the direction of the commission was only with respect to the setback increase. My, my understanding is that the building must continue to comply with the remaining institutional design standards for things like massing, windows, main entrances, and articulation of the building and roofline.
So that was added because of code, not because we said they needed to build.
That's correct.
Concrete or, okay, I was going to say, I didn't remember us saying they needed to add sculpture, fountains or outdoor cafe.
Right, this is just to ensure that code continues to be met with the increased setback.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks. Good question.
Commissioner McGriff.
Yes, I'm, I'm satisfied that the, that the staff has, has more than adequately addressed our concerns and has crafted findings, which basically articulate what we had discussed. I, I am ready to, unless there's other questions, make a motion that we adopt the supplemental final findings for these, all of these applications.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded.
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
Hi.
Commissioner Rachel Lyles Smith?
Hi.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Hi.
And Commission President Rocky Smith?
Hi.
Motion passes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, that brings us to eight B. First reading of ordinance number twenty-one dash ten oh six vacating a section of public right-of-way. Public Works Director John Lewis.
Uh, thank you, Commissioners. So yeah, this is uh, first reading of an item that we brought to you in February. So we received an application for a vacation of a alley right away near sixteen twenty-five Washington Street. There's actually a couple of different, uh, a couple of different addresses at that, in, in that, in this area. There is a graphic that shows um, the alley that we're talking about. It's really not accessible for public use as it sits today. And uh, to me, it's, there was a surprise that we haven't vacated it sooner. I think we heard from the commission back in uh, February that they supported the idea of moving forward with the, with the vacation. So we're bringing it to you now. And I'm happy to answer any questions. We definitely feel like um, vacation uh, approval meets with the conditions that exist in the code for approval of such a vacation. So I guess I'll open it up for any questions.
Um, John, I'm looking at the map. I remember going over this, but I, can you remind me exactly where this, it's on Washington, but what's the cross street? And what's the um?
So it's uh, really between the uh, Sixteenth Street and Evernathy Creek. There's um, the truck uh, accessory shop there. There's the Keylock Smith shop right there. Yeah.
Thank you. All right, um, Commissioner Lyles Smith?
Yes, I was going to make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance from twenty-one dash one zero zero six.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner McGriff, did you have a question? Are you still, you have your?
No, I'm seconding the motion.
All right.
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
Wait.
Yes, I'm gonna vote I. I generally don't support vacations, but I believe that this one is in the best public interest.
Wait.
Sorry.
Sorry, I need to read the ordinance by title before we take a vote. So sorry to interrupt.
That's your job.
I know, but it feels a little more abrupt on Zoom. Sorry about that. Ordinance number twenty-one dash one zero zero six, an ordinance of the city of Oregon City vacating the alley in block B of Clackamas County Platt map number thirty-five, Park Edition, a duly recorded plat in the city of Oregon City, Clackamas County, Oregon.
All right, now a call for the vote.
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
Approved as submitted. Again, it's in the best public interest in this case. I generally don't support giving up any city property, but this one's fine.
Commissioner Rachel Lyles Smith?
Hi.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Hi.
And Commission President Rocky Smith?
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, eight C, request for continuance for the sale of public works property at Center Street.
All right, um, thank you for the opportunity to, and I appreciate the, the continuance. We had hoped to have this for you um, tonight, but there's, there was a a appraisal done, a couple of items that we needed to deal with in the sale. So we've um, amended the agreement and to extend it out. So we'll be bringing this to your, back to you uh, first meeting in April. I think it's April seventh. That, that gives us a little bit of time to fix a couple of things at the house that came out of the appraisal report. And um, so that's what we needed to do tonight.
Commissioner McGriff?
You're on mute, Commissioner.
Yes, I know. I was, the arrow wouldn't go on the thing, so sorry. Okay, I, I don't have any objection to um, the sale of this. I had expressed my concern to the city manager that in the future, when we have properties that I would like to see us use local people, not, and I mean local, mean Oregon City area, not necessarily outside of Lake Oswego or wherever. And the other concern I have is that I would hope that we would look at this from the standpoint of not the person that comes in with the highest bid. But I would really like to see a family get this house as opposed to somebody who's gonna buy it and flip it or turn into a long-term rental. I think we have an opportunity here as a, as a jurisdiction to hopefully find somebody that might want to make it their forever home, so to speak, to quote my Realtor friends. And I don't know how the rest of you feel about it, but um, that's just something I, I wanted to put in to suggest about this sale.
Were we talking about the house or were we talking about the property on Center Street?
We're talking about the house.
The house at three oh six Center Street.
Yeah. Okay, so its address is on Center Street too?
Yes.
Okay, even though it's not, okay.
Yeah, it goes up the Little Road.
Okay, I was confused because I, and it's not really on Center Street, but all right. Commissioner Lyles Smith?
Well, um, I guess I have a, a question about what Commissioner McGriff just brought up. I assume there's already some legally binding artifacts between a buyer and the city about this particular house. So I'm not sure that, can we backtrack or with her suggestion or where are we at in the sale process?
I think what I'm hearing from Commissioner McGriff is she would like in the future, we do things um, to condition the purchase of or sale of city property. We don't do this often, put it that way. I think the police department was uh, a pretty recent sale, but that, that was the only example of that. I, I don't think I've been involved in a sale of a city property. But we do have another one coming up pretty soon. So I just, I don't know how to condition some of those things. And I'd have to work with the attorney to figure out what um, capacity we have. I mean, so, but you know, I know if you have your home for sale and you've got multiple offers, you can, you know, somehow, you know, pursue those. In this case, uh, we had, we didn't, we weren't in that situation. And so uh, we ha, and we haven't heard from other buyers that are, that are interested in, in that property right now. Um, so yeah, I mean, I guess there's probably some options there. We didn't have too many, you know, it wasn't a bidding war on this particular property.
We had, we had one offer. We had one offer.
Right.
Okay. An offer before we're advertising it for sale? That doesn't make sense to me.
No, no, we, we advertised it for sale. It was on the market. And out of that, we have heard from one interested party. And that's who we're selling to.
And is there already a, um, just to be clear, there's already some type of contractual notice to sell?
There's a sales agreement. Yeah, we've worked through the city manager who, you know, really has that negotiating authority. But at the end of the day, you have to approve that sale.
Right.
So there's all, it could always, it could always be uh, that those sales agreements are done under the understanding that the city commission filed a determination.
Right. Um, I, I understand where Commissioner McGriff is, is coming from. And if you were normally, like you said, selling your house, you could look at multiple offers. And if you had an intent or you wanted to be proactive about selecting a particular type of home ownership, then, then yeah, you could pick it, uh, pick a different proposal or offer. Um, so maybe yeah, something to think about in the future, but it sounds like this one as well on its way. So I was just following up, trying to add, it's a little more clarity on what was happening.
All right, Commissioner O'Donnell?
So there is a purchase and sale agreement, apparently.
Yes.
What is, I see the appraised value and I see comparable values in here. What is the sale price?
Oh, boy. Uh, I should notice, let's see.
It's not in the report.
This property is recently appraised at four seventy-five. Yeah.
The request is for this to be continued, right?
Yeah, I can pipe in here. I'm sorry, if Chair, if you mind, I'm gonna pipe in here really quick. So this is for, just for a continuance, it's to notice the sale of the property at the next, oh, I lost. Did I lose? Okay, sorry. At the next um, meeting, the purchase and sale agreement will be coming before the commission. And at that time is when the city commission will take a look at that purchase and sale agreement, answer any, ask any questions about it. And then at that time, we'll approve that purchase and sale agreement. Right now, the staff is just asking for a continuance to publicly notice that this property is for sale. And at the next meeting, they will bring the purchase and sale agreement. If you give me like five minutes, I can look up what the price is, but you'll have it in your packet next week.
Now, let's do this. The property is actually not this, but the property is in pending status. There's a sale, purchase and sale agreement made. It's not actively for sale. The questions I would like answered at the next meeting are, how much did it sell for? What avenues of advertisement were pursued? Was it listed through uh, multiple listing service? How long was it put out there? And I see that comparable values, and these are the questions I'm going to ask next meeting. Our four eighty to five forty-one, so I'm gonna be interested in what it sold for and why. Because I've been following this market closely, and what I'm seeing is people bidding way in excess of the value of the home to the point where they're willing to pay the difference between appraised value and sale value. And they're willing to buy houses without even an inspection. So I would, those are the kind of things that I'd like to hear in the next meeting. And I'll put you on notice now, and then we can, we can do what we're here to do tonight, which is set this over to that date.
Commissioner McGriff?
Yes, I, I apologize. Did I completely miss the vote? I, I don't see anything in this report that says we already have a purchase and sale agreement. So did I miss? Did I miss a meeting? Was that the meeting I was asleep in? I don't see it. And I'm just like, what?
So just to be um, straight on this one, we had this one all queued up to come to the city commission. But with the timing of it, which included the sales agreement, included that we, we, we've got a PowerPoint presentations we were gonna do with this one as well. So the kinds of questions that I think Commissioner O'Donnell was asking for was our intent to bring it. The problem was is that when, uh, the timing of some of these sales transactions, in this case included an appraisal. And that appraisal had some items that kind of left us. We, we needed to do uh, an additional inspection that was in question. So to, just to get those done, we couldn't get them done in time for tonight's meeting. So in order to um, deal with that, Katie put together this continuance commission package. But I, I don't believe, Katie, that it included um, all the pieces that are, were in the original staff report. Is that correct?
That's correct. It did not. And the reason why it had to come before the commission tonight was because we had to publicly notice it in the newspaper. And when we publicly noticed it in the newspaper, we said that we would be holding a public hearing at this meeting for anybody who had questions about the sale of the property. So we had to um, hold this meeting and have the agenda on the, I, on the, have this item on the agenda, excuse me. So that if anybody was interested in asking questions about the sale of this property, they could speak at this meeting. Because we weren't ready to present the actual sale of the property, we're asking for a continuance so that we can bring all of that information to you back at the next meeting, which would be the April seventh meeting. So what's being asked of you tonight is to make a motion to continue this item until the April seventh, until a date certain of the April seventh meeting and take any public comment tonight if there is any.
Okay, so we're only asking for public comment because I went back into the path, I, you know, I save everything. So I went back to a previous packet and I still missed the fact that this was, I mean, this was already sold. So I mean, any person who is not knowledgeable, and obviously I'm including myself in that, would look at this and say, oh, this property is available for sale. I wonder if I can buy it. I, I, I guess I just, I'm just a little bit sort of flummoxed because what we're doing is not what I thought we were asking for, so.
We had an executive session related to
Yes, I remember that.
And we were, we were discussing the properties that we did not need with the conversion of the Public Works Upper Yard to a new park. This property was discussed as being a property to be put up for sale. We went, we engaged a broker. We put it up for sale, had the open house. We received one offer, and now we're trying to close the deal at this point. The inspection by the buyer's landlord has raised some issues that we need to work through. The original offer price was four seventy-five. We've been negotiating back and forth on that, trying to get to a spot where we can bring a sale agreement forward.
Okay. Well, I still, my, my comments still stand about, I know we're not gonna have that many properties come up, but it seems to me if we're walking our talk, you know, again, I, I don't want to see this being sold to somebody that's speculating on it. I really want to see us support single-family residential and somebody that needs a home should be able to buy this. And I also want to make sure that we are, are doing our due diligence in talking to people. I had several, as I pointed out to staff, I had several Realtors call me saying, why didn't they use somebody local? So.
We used the realtor firm.
I understand. I know that, but I explained that to him.
Commissioner McGriff, you understand because we had the conversation. I'm not sure.
And I explained that to the Realtors, but in the rest, we should be looking at that.
Well, the rest of us would like to know about your conversation, so.
So the question was, why didn't we use a local Realtor? The Realtor that we used is the same Realtor that did significant work for us on the Public Works Upper Yard. Remember, we tried to appraise the two parking lots on Center Street, the Center Street Operations Center, the Upper Yard, the lot that we had purchased and demolished the home on, as well as this, when we were trying to get an understanding of what the value of that property was as we were gonna make decisions about transitioning it from the Upper Yard and what reimbursements we're gonna need to happen on the value of that related to the one home, you know, both of these homes were bought with utility fees, and we're gonna have to reimburse those as part of that process. So the, we continued to work with the Realtor who had done that work for us just because of the existing knowledge and the work that had gone into this. I fully appreciate Commissioner McGriff's position, and um, we can certainly work, you know, try, you know, work with local Realtors moving forward on property sales that we have. But in this case, uh, we had someone that had done a lot of work on this property already. I guess um, one other little piece that, again, we can share next week, but that house is uh, unique. If you've been inside of it, it's unique. It's, it's not your typical single-family home. It does kind of lend itself to uh, becoming uh, I don't know if they're thinking multifamily or what, but it's got an upstairs. It's kind of separate from the downstairs. And you know, it has some potential there for some, some um, you know, mixed-use housing. And uh, the site is also, you know, that's some access challenges, um, being, as you said, Commissioner Smith. It, it doesn't face Center Street, but it's got a Center Street uh, um, address. It, it's, it's a little bit odd, and you know, we would have never purchased it had we not been planning for the use of the Center Street site. So it's, it's, it's an odd piece of property. But we have a buyer for it. That's the good news. We'll bring it back next meeting. And I apologize for the confusion on that. I wasn't anticipating that, so.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I understand everything that was said tonight. And, but next, when we view this next time, the city has been subject to criticism on sales of properties and not engaging in, what we need to be able to state is, did we list it with Realtor's multiple listing service? When you see the, is it in there currently? Because if you look at that service, you will see the property is either stated as available or pending. So my expectation is that this was listed with multiple listing, that if I were to look it up, I would see that kind of information. And we need to be prepared to state that, so the public knows this was a total routine deal in the, in the housing market. I'm not gonna comment on, do I feel someone who is very strong in the, in commercial properties should have been the Realtor choice? I, that's for staff to manage, but we need to be able to answer the questions I posed in addition to this. How long do we advertise it? Where do we advertise it? How long do we advertise it? Where do we advertise it? And you've already said with the response we got, so I'll leave it at that, and let's just do what we're here to do tonight, which is to continue it to the next meeting. Thanks.
Sure, and just
That's a motion. I'll second it.
If you go on Zillow right now, it's, it's marked as pending.
Good. Is it in the Multiple Listing Service?
Yeah, gosh, I'm not sure what, the R L S website?
MLS.
MLS.
Yeah. It was, it was listed that way. Whether it's still there, I
Well, Zillow is one avenue, but Realtors use Realtors' Multiple Listing Service.
Are you making a motion to that effect?
It's listed with an MLS number.
Are you making a motion?
I think we need to open the public hearing and take test.
Need to see if there's any public comment. I know there's nothing on my sign-up list, but.
And we haven't received any.
Of anything. No public comment that's there.
Okay, well, I'll move that we can, unless you wanna open and close it.
Open and close.
So I'll move that we close the public hearing and continue to a date certain of April seventh, twenty twenty-one on this particular item.
Seconded by O'Donnell.
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Rachel Lyle Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
And Commission President Rocky Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Smith, before you close this, the people that lived there were artists. So that is why that has an interesting configuration. She had a studio in one place, and he had a studio in another place of the house. And I only know that because they were, I, I knew them quite well.
All right. Nine A, are we doing okay? Do people need a break? Are we ready to keep going?
I could take a five-minute break, please.
Five-minute break? Let's do that. Five-minute break. All right. Even on a break, Commissioner McGriff has her hand up.
She's ready.
She's ready to go. All right. I think we're back. Are we, we're
You should know I've had a lot of stimulants tonight, so look out.
All right. Are we all ready back on? I think everyone's back. I think we are good. And we're on. All right. So all right, we are at General Business Nine A, Resolution Number Twenty-One Fifteen, Revisions to the Parklet and Private Property Restaurant Retail Guide for March. And that is John Lewis and Laura Turway, I believe. I don't know who's, Johnny, you're starting or?
Yeah, yes, I'm gonna start. So thank you, Commissioner President. I'm gonna share my screen real quick. Everybody see my screen, Resolution Twenty-One Fifteen?
Yes.
Okay, great. So thank you again. In October last year, the City Commission adopted the Parlet, the Parlet, the Parklet Pilot Program, allowing outdoor dining in retail and park, in parking strips or in parking lots. Since adoption, the City Commission and the business community have inquired about program amendments. So Mrs. Tur, Ms. Turway and I are going to present these ideas and recommendations. One thing I'll add, and you know, is that we've got four resolutions before you under General Business Nine A, B, C, and D. You have four different commission agenda items and commission reports, but they're all related in the, in the past discussions with the City Commission, they tend to cross over. So we are going to use one presentation to open up the conversation, and all, as always, it's up to you how much discussion you want to have under the individual agenda items. But we're gonna try to cover them. We've only got one presentation, and we're gonna, at least on my end, I'm gonna try to cover both parklets as well as sidewalks and permit, the associated permit fees under this one presentation. Let's see. So again, I'm, I'm going to talk a little bit about sidewalk seating and then go into the parklets. And then Laura's gonna take over the temporary outdoor dining and retail private parking lots. So despite, I mean, this is about sidewalk obstructions in our standard operating policy. So this is Resolution Twenty-One dash zero-three. I'll make sure I'm describing that one. So that is your item nine C. So if this, I'm hoping this isn't confusing, but I'm just trying to give you the information in a context of the overall downtown sidewalk use, parklet use. So despite our award-winning Main Street and all the work that has occurred to make our downtown vibrant, I wish we had wider sidewalks in our downtown. This pandemic and the need for active use of sidewalks has really pushed us to the limit. The location of this picture is a great example of how we have been able to work with the property owner to expand their service floor area, to be outs, extended outside onto the sidewalk, and also accommodate the, through travel needs of pedestrians. And it, it works when it's managed properly by the business owner. We've got other graphics in the packets, but this picture kind of shows pretty well as well. We've kind of got really in our sidewalks, kind of three zones. We've got a building zone, a pedestrian zone, and a furnishing zone. And the building zone is that area. In this case, we're using it a little bit liberally, but with those tables and chairs that are up against the building, the potted plants up against the building, that's kind of that building zone. Then we have a pedestrian zone where we need to at least maintain a forty-eight-inch ADA access. That's a little tight. But it's, it, it's compliant. And then we have the furnishing zone, and in most cases along our sidewalks, that's kind of the area where the streetlights are. Benches might be trees, things like that. And then in some cases, like on this corner, we've got these bulbouts or curb extensions that give a little more capacity, and that's how this corner works as well as it does for tables and chairs that sit in that bulbout. Unfortunately, the same area has recently changed to include a pop-up canopy. So I'm not, I don't have a picture of that, but you've probably seen it, that encompass the through sidewalk zone. So it, it goes, it bridges or covers both the, all three zones, really, the, the the building zone, the pedestrian zone, and the the furnishing zone. And, you know, while people can still walk under that, and, you know, there's, there's the coverage of that, it's helpful, and it's helpful for the restaurant to be able to utilize those, that sidewalk in that manner. The, the, the impact that that has, I don't know if you've watched it being used, but the impact of that is people, pedestrians that are walking down the street see that. It feels like you're walking into the restaurant essentially. And I, I've seen pedestrians rather than walk under the canopy, they, they stop and they walk around, and they will either go into the parking strip or try and walk along the top of the curb and, and walk around the, the, the use that's going on in the sidewalk. So those, those have been problematic, and those, that's not a, a use that we're actively asking you for tonight. But we do, so we have developed a policy to guide the proper use of our downtown sidewalks, and that was in your packet. So sidewalk obstructions in our operating policy, you know, it's, the prevailing code is in our, is in our municipal code. We've got things that talk about permanent obstructions and temporary obstructions, and we're not talking about permanent obstructions here. That's a, that's a different conversation. But we have a process for that. We are talking about temporary obstructions. And really, I guess, Commissioner Lyle Smith, we had a convers- conversation about some of the clarity of the language. I think we cleared that up enough to help with that. There was a little bit of difference between how, well, how we were naming these obstructions. So we did this, this go around kind of helped, kind of stay consistent with that. But we've got short-term obstructions in the right-of-way. Those are typically zero to sixty days or, or less, things that might feel a little bit more like a sidewalk sale could be in that category. And then we've got the long-term obstructions in the right-of-way that would be a little bit more like sidewalk seating where, for the most part, they're out there three hundred and sixty-five days. They might not always be out there because of the weather, but their tables and chairs occupy at that time. And then we've got another category, which is the sidewalk sale. So the other short-term obstruction is typically things that aren't permanently mounted. So they're, they're not anchored. They can be easily moved. But before sidewalk seating, it was more like moving pods, or, you know, if they're remodeling a building, their debris dumpsters, those kind of things. It might be in those areas for shorter periods of time, and we would give them a short-term obstruction and right-of-way permit for that. And again, the long term is similar to that. It's just a longer period of time. So this policy establishes a process for getting the obstruction permit. We deal with things like the Americans with Disabilities Act, to make sure we get those kinds of we meet those kinds of standards. We've been including conditions for conditions that might be, you know, at least we mentioned the Center for Disease Control, Organ Health Authority, and the FIRE Code. We've got some design codes which are in the policy, and then enforcement's been discussed a fair amount. We do enforcement, and we do a fair, most of our work with the property owner at the time of issuance of those permits. We've done some enforcement based on either you know, staff that are actively kind of using the area or walking in the area and noting, noting that thing, that those problems. And then we've got parking enforcement folks out there, and, you know, we, we have most of our enforcement is complaint-driven, and, but that can come in from internal complaints as well as external complaints. And then we, lots of times what you hear is concerns from the businesses about the indemnification agreements, but we think those are important to have in in our policy and make those requirements, indemnification and insurance requirements. So that, that's about all I was gonna say about the sidewalk operating policy. We can come back to that under the agenda item. Or if you've got any questions, I'm happy to answer those now.
Yeah, I do.
Yes, sir.
Sorry. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I was fishing for my hand up. So I, I think it's important that, you know, many of these things are in response to the COVID situation, and some of them may be rescinded at a future date. People all need to understand that, need to make their own business judgment as to what they wanna do. My concern is always public safety. I don't want projectiles flying down the street. I don't know if we have any rules for securing some of these devices. And then finally, I'd almost like to see an enforcement provision in there that if we have warned you twice and you continue some action that is not in keeping with this, this is the penalty. And you don't, we don't state that at all. There are gonna be those that will not, will always push the envelope, and they need to be aware that enforcement actions can happen. I will see any statement to that effect. That's all I've got to say. Thanks.
All right. Anything else?
I'll move on then, but I will, Commissioner O'Donnell, I, I agree. I think our enforcement program is is generally been to work, you know, with the property owner to get in compliance, I think, from our experience, those property owners are interested in complying. You know, I think it, it's, it's, it's an adjusting process and time. We're trying to work through these issues and, and staying in good standing with our business community. And so I feel like we're, we're making progress with that, as opposed to giving, giving them an ultimatum, but I hear what you're, I hear what you're saying.
I don't give an ultimatum. I just want them to know that we're trying to work with them. They need to work with us in the interest of the public welfare. And I'd rather put them on notice upfront that i- if you are continuing, you don't comply with these things, there will be enforcement action, so it's not a surprise. So I'd rather do it upfront than You don't comply with these things, there will be enforcement action. So it's not a surprise. So I'd rather do it upfront than surprise them later. Thanks.
Commissioner McGrath.
And I just wanted to say that I have really appreciated the fact that. Staff has really tried very hard to be nimble with this. It's like. As he said, it's sort of a moving target in some cases. I think that we've tried to be reasonable. But I agree with Commissioner O'Donnell. To me, first and foremost is public safety, because when push comes to shove. Anybody that is harmed by this in any way is going to try to come back on the city and that is really. Amount in my mind, because we're supposed to be the deep pockets. So. You would think that someone would want to make sure that they have a rider on this so that they are covered because people are extremely litigious. And if anything happened and it was perceived that we were negligent, I just, I don't think I could. Really deal with it very well, but I think we've been, we've been, we've bent over backwards. Like every time we come up with something. Somebody sees something from another city and then says, oh, let's try this. So. It's been a moving target and I just want staff to know that um what they've done so far has been very appreciated.
Commissioner.
You, um, so just to follow up on Commissioner O'Donnell's statement, when I'm looking at the um. The procedures document, which is, which is the one item that uh Mr. Lewis was just talking about. There is a section at the very end on page seven of talks about enforcement. What it doesn't say is what the penalty will that or that there is a penalty. So I don't know if that's an easy edit that just says that, you know, enforcement enforcement will follow. You know, our other code enforcement guidelines of how fees are, you know what I mean, of how penalties are. All of that is assessed through the the normal code enforce it, uh code enforcement process, maybe is assumed by saying that there is enforcement, but that would be the only. Edit if we wanted to make it a little bit more explicit.
Thanks.
Think I think on the enforcement, I think what's hard, right, is someone's out of compliance, we go tell them, they move it back into compliance. Or they're out of compliance, we turn it into code enforcement, they get the letter, they make it back into a compliance or. They're out of compliance, they go to the court, they say, okay, I'll move it back into compliance, right? So I mean, we might have to take a different tact. I mean, I guess it's gets back to Commissioner O'Donnell's, is it strike three, you're out. Versus, you know, to it. You know, at the end of the day, traditionally, our approach to code enforcement is to get compliance, right? But if it's the same, I guess that's something we can talk about with J- John and and Jim, you know. If it's the same thing over and over and over and over again, do we finally say we're done? Right? And that'd be diff, that'd be, this is, this is unique, right? I mean, someone builds a fence six foot high, you cut it back to three and a half, it's done. You know, you're in compliance and we move on. They're not going to put an extra two and a half feet on it or one and a half feet on it some later date. So it's a little bit of a an oddity. We do have the authority to revoke. So we've got a lot of authority within the public right away and uh w- w- we just, I mean, I would say we tend to not um. You know, especially with our businesses, be careful about how we, you know, um apply that authority. But I, you know, so I don't, I don't want it to sound threatening at all. I just, I want it to be. I I agree, it needs to be clear with them and we can do that in the permit that we issue. Um, we can add language to the permits that we issue as opposed to having it in this policy that, hey, you know, we we expect compliance and you can lose your permit if you don't comply.
Um, our police chief has his hand up, Jim Matt.
So thanks, um. I dig into this a little bit after the last meeting and I think that Tony's um, Tony's point is, is. I I think the one about about enforcement and in in getting formal on enforcement and. I looked at um one of the businesses downtown, just to get some examples of what do these permits look like and they're they're very um. You know, there's a, there's pictures that are taken, this business in particular, they were. Including where they have to put a map of where their chairs and tables are at and it includes, they were measuring to ensure that they were compliant with, I think it's four feet that ADA requires. So I think the better enforcement piece isn't. I don't think we'll get there anyways, because we've, we've talked to people, I I talked to Liz at Doka, you know, trying to get, get the word out to everybody about how important this is, but. I think if we ever did get to an enforcement piece, the way to do it, I think would be to either revoke the permit, you know, we gave you a shot, you're not complying. And so we're not going to mess around, we're just going to take your permit back or to revise the permit to look at. Hey, we 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 have this map here and you have tables and chairs here, but we're going to redo it to make it simpler. Um, because I think that a lot of the businesses are trying to comply and then when they have people come and sit down. That's where some of the the problems and people start moving tables and chairs, but I think that's a better way of going through and enforcement than giving someone a citation to appear in court.
I'm I'm just interested in the repeat offenders who refuse to take the counsel. And I guess you could say, yeah, if we give them a fine, they'll pay the fine and do it anyhow, because it the the benefit is worth the fine. But the revocation is actually pretty big medicine. So. Maybe we skip the fine thing and say, if you you're there three times, you will revoke your permit. So what's that worth? And I'm not here to threaten anybody. I just want to guarantee public safety, thoroughfare and compliance with, we're trying to work with you, work with us.
Commissioner McGrath.
Well, I think that uh City Manager Conk will hit the nail on the head and I don't want to beat buddy over the head with a hammer, but we have. I guess where I get upset is when. The people that are not doing what they're supposed to be doing are bragging to everybody else how they're getting away with it. And that really. Because that is not right. And then everybody else thinks, okay, well, it's okay for them, so it must be okay for me. And that is not right either. So I would support a revocation of a permit, because how many times are you going to give somebody? An opportunity to do the right thing is five times too many, is ten times too many? Uh, you know, four times. I think you talk to them, we've, we've done this already. And there hasn't been compliance. So.
Agreed. Okay, um, I um. The next thing I want to talk about, which is pretty straightforward, is Resolution twenty one oh one, which I want to say is item nine B. And uh, no, mine. It's uh, yeah, nine B. So um. The way the code reads is we need, uh City Commission needs designate where we could have things like sidewalk sales. So. This is a resolution designating certain areas of Oregon City where the public sidewalk could be used for sale of goods and merchandise. And um, we didn't have, we don't have a map of that, but it's basically our downtown area. Um, between ninety ninety and Railroad Avenue, so sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth and tenth streets are what we've listed. And you know, those are streets that have sidewalks, you know, not all of our sidewalks are even as wide as what we see in those places. So those are areas where we think um. Uh, it that can happen. Um. Uh, our main street, obviously, and uh in the McLaughlin neighborhood, it's the Seventh Street uh corridor. So um. So we're, we're, we're designating those and um. You know, I don't, I don't know if if that area needs to get, if there's other areas that you're thinking of as well, but that's what we're talking about.
So John, and that's why um it doesn't actually say Main Street. It so, but it includes Main Street and side streets or.
Uh, if it would, it would include Main Street. My slide doesn't say it, but the exhibit A does. So I I left that.
I mean, it's assumed was, I just didn't see it there.
Yeah, my mistake, my mistake. And then twenty one oh five was uh the renewable.
Ask you a question before you go on to that, just clarifying.
Sure.
I don't have any problem with the, with the resolution. I just wanted to know, so if somebody, so on sidewalk sales, is it either or? So if somebody has seating. Tables and chairs, they have a tent, they have a parklet. Do they still get sidewalk sales? I mean, we're, we're talking, we're talking loading this, loading the public right away up. So was it an either or thing or all of the above? Did we think about that?
Um, well, um, I'm trying to think, we haven't had any requests like that. Um, you know, obviously we're talking the same frontage, it's got to be, you know, in front of their business. So, you know, is it possible that a business? Um, uh, has a a little bit of both, I suppose it is, um, all three. I I can't think of any businesses that would pursue that. Um, in town, but um, you know, we'd, we'd have to look at that. I mean, there's still public safety that we consider in our, in our issuance of permits. There's, I mean. I know that these uh guidelines and um decisions help guide that, but we've always scrutinized the use of the sidewalk. And in fact, you know, our. Our reputation is we were too hard harsh on that, especially in these times. That's why we've kind of backed off some of the um review or. Um, we've allowed more uses recently, um, you know, based on that public feedback, but generally we're pretty restrictive of that, of the use of the right away. That help?
Yeah, I I would suspect that you will review it and if it, if that situation came up. It probably wouldn't be able to, it wouldn't work. I don't think it would work. It just, there would just be too much, too many items out there and, you know.
We try to think of it from the driver's perspectives that are using that.
No, I'm looking at it from a pedestrian standpoint.
Well, what I'm trying to say is we look at it from all the perspectives. We look at it from a driver's perspective, from a, from a pedestrians perspective, from a um. A handicaps perspective, from the business owner's perspective. We're trying to balance all of that in a, in a pretty small space.
Yep. Thank you.
Let's see, um, the fee schedule was another item that we, uh, this is item nine. D, uh, Resolution twenty twenty one oh five. So there's really, there's one change and that was a change that was. Um, at the 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 direction we got was our renewable right away permit, which is for. Uh, you know, outdoor seating, those kind of things that are in the right away. Um. You know, our fees were too high, so we we were asked to go to look at what other agencies have have done. And so there's an exhibit C that has some comparison code. So Josh Wheeler spent a fair amount of time. Reaching out, trying to figure that out, he and us and staff. And um, so we're suggesting we take that from a hundred and seventy dollars to eighty five dollars. And um. Yeah. And then uh just remember that your Resolution twenty dash twenty two allows issuance of no cost permits for the renewable right away permits in effect through the end of the year or through end of, through November thirtieth of twenty twenty one. All right, that's sidewalks. Any questions about sidewalks and our sidewalk processes and fees and so forth? Not, we'll move on to parklets. Um, though we adopted the parklet program, it's intended to go through November twenty twenty one. I know there's been some discussion about should that, you know, be a more permanent thing. I know the business community has been talking about that. We're not proposing any changes to the date tonight. So again, I think our position has been, or the City Commission's position has been, let's see how this goes. So um, eh, but parklets do require a right away permit. Um, we haven't issued a lot of them. And we've heard of other interests from others. I think folks are kind of trying to make that this the business decision, which I think is appropriate. When I look at these parklets, sometimes I wonder how um. How well, you know, they're serving the businesses that have built them. Um, but uh they're out there, they're an option for that. And we've uh re- really kind of um done a lot to maintain, make that easy for uh folks to get. Um, in order to do it, the parklet needs to be in mixed use downtown or Seventh Street Corridor. It requires a building owner approval and um. Adjacent neighbor approval. We had. Required one per business. What we're proposing is we've heard from folks who might want to do an addition or expansion. Of um their existing parklet. So we're suggesting to allow more than one per business. Um, again, I I don't know that that'll actually result in more, but that's what we're talking about. Um, allowing umbrellas and canopies. And the other thing is some of the materials, we had um. Um, membrane pallet, construction fencing or chain link not allowed. We've got a a few changes to that material requirement that we're recommending. Uh, just a reminder, we still require liability insurance and indemnity agreement, uh as Jim mentioned, a detailed site plan. I mean, these aren't. Tough conditions, but um, you know, some of these businesses aren't, aren't used to having to provide those kind of things. But we think that's the responsible way to manage it and it's reasonable for for what they're, how they're wanting to use the right away. So if you hear complaints, I mean, that that's kind of been the other little pro- problem with this process is. You know, the, if they're unhappy with process, they they reach out to you sometimes and then there's this question of, you know, are we doing things right? And I think for the most part, we're, we're always willing to listen to people. We try to work with people, but there are limits and I think we've. Landed on a pretty good place with regard to our process. Again, we do have some con- conditions uh that we consider in our review and our issuance of that permit. So some of the updates that we're suggesting, um. We uh remove the membrane structures and pop ups as a disallowed material, so they would be allowed now in their um, the changes that we're proposing. And um, I think, you know, those pop ups over the sidewalk are more problematic than the pop ups inside the in in uh over the um parklet. So uh we think that's a a good allowable, um, allowing multiple parklets per business. If the neighboring business and property owner allows it. Um, you know, parking has always been a concern or complaint about the community, not enough parking downtown. But at this point in time, it seems like these parklets um have a lot of favor. And so we're suggesting that maybe we allow more parklets per business. Um, and um. So there's that. And then one other piece that's, some people don't necessarily follow, but I think makes a lot of sense is. Um, instead of building a parklet where people are sitting, build something similar where the diversion of the um through sidewalk. Is done in a way that is very obvious to the pedestrian, whether they have accessibility issues or not. To uh meander around the area adjacent to the building. So what would typically be the ped zone, the furnishing zone and the building zone, allow those to be occupied as a. As a parklet's space and then uh in a safe way divert the pedestrian traffic around. We've heard from um at least one business that uh thought that might be a good use. So they're hoping for that kind of an approval. And then a little more clarification on some of these um code or um. You know, uh, Americans with Disability Act or CDC or fire district requirements. So that's what Resolution twenty one fifteen is about from the public side. And I think Laura, um, does, do you have any questions about that before Laura takes on the private side?
Yeah, um, Commissioner McGrath.
Now, I just wanted to ask about, um, so it's still a part of the public right away. So we have um. Tents on public right away on Eighth Street. And also a newer one here adjacent to the bridge. And I'm wondering if ODOT is going to have anything to say about that. I mean, it's like about that far from the bridge.
Yeah, I saw that yesterday and I didn't get a chance to ask staff about that one. That is ODOT right away there. Um. And I bet you ODOT hasn't been asked, but I could be wrong about that. I just haven't had a chance to look into that one, Commissioner McGrath.
Yeah, I I will have to tell you that, that, you know, Rocky's been here long enough, but I remember. Yeah, I, I will have to tell you that, that, you know, Rocky's been here long enough, but I remember driving my car down through there.
Yeah.
It was open for, for access before the bridge was redone.
I do remember that. Um, Mike, I guess, I, Commissioner O'Donnell's points on this are kind of ones that I agree with. Uh, there's some things on this list that I would not agree with if this becomes a full, but you know, permanent thing. You know, like, I, 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 I get um, kind of allowing the pop-ups in the parklets for now. Um, I don't get it on the sidewalks, it shouldn't be allowed, I don't think on that. But um, I think if we do have a discussion at some point, that these are permanent things that are going to continue, I think some of those, some of those restrictions will be, you know, a little bit more specific, because I don't think, well, I, I, I can't imagine allowing pop-up tents as a permanent um, solution. Um, I'm less worried about the multiple parklets. Um, I have to say, I went downtown um, this weekend, this past weekend, and um, was happy to utilize one of the shared parking lots that, you know, remember, we have to, we have these shared parking lots downtown that allow people to park in them, uh, that have added more spaces. So I think that has kind of, kind of balanced out a little bit, so I appreciate that. All right, um, was there anything more, Commissioner Allison, did you have? No, I thought your hand was, okay, I think we're good on this thing.
Laura Turway has a few slides in the um, details she's ready to go through, so Laura?
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, next slide, please. So I'm just going to recap a little bit about our program for um, the same sort of thing on private property. Currently, this temporary program allows up to half a parking lot to be used for an unlimited number of tents, shade structures, temporary structures, anything like that. Though there are a variety of restrictions, there's some prohibitive materials, some barriers that have to be constructed to keep the public safe and things like that. Next slide. Um, I'm going to go through a couple of the proposed changes. There's not that many, so I'll go through one by one. The first change would allow businesses to utilize the temporary program who may want to expand beyond that parking lot, or businesses that don't have a parking lot to extend into. So really, we're thinking um, grass areas, paved areas, patios, patio covers, sort of those sorts of um, applications. There's a couple of pictures on the slide. This is sort of the biggest change from, that we have proposed. I know we talked about it at the work session, so hopefully these images are a little bit more helpful, too. Um, we currently have uh, about a handful of these in code enforcement. And if this gets approved, it will solve um, the, it will allow a pathway for permitting for at least some of them. Next slide. Some additional changes include clarifying how existing standards for landscaping and pedestrian access relate, now that we're taking it off the parking lot and also putting it throughout the site. And so we wanted to make clear that there can be changes to some of the pedestrian access ways onsite as long as we maintain our minimum requirements. So our code requires minimums for the entrance ways to be connected on a site and for those connections to also connect to the sidewalk in the street. So acknowledging that there might be a place where someone might put a tent in an extra little space, but it might be okay, because we could still meet our standards, um, as well as comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act and other um, make uh, pedestrian access ways in the site. The other things about landscaping, in the existing package, we say that no landscaping can be removed. And the proposed amendments, we acknowledge that people actually can remove landscaping if they want to. They could remove landscaping and then the next day come in for this application. So it was sort of doesn't work really well to say that there is no landscaping that can be removed. Because as long as people don't go below their minimum, and they're still above their minimum, then they do have a little bit of leeway there. And so we're trying to get ahead of people playing the game where they submit an application one day to avoid the standard of not removing the landscaping the next day when they submit one of these temporary um, applications. Next slide. This is the last, and it relates to that barrier standard. So just like on parklets, the same standard applies for public parking lots, which makes sense, because cars are roaming around. Now we're putting people and diners in the same space. And so we have provisions to have um, physical barriers that would withstand light vehicular impact while it's in the parking lot. But um, since it's going to be possible for businesses to have them outside parking lots, you know, there's a place where you might not need a barrier, because it's really far away from a place where a car could be. And so we pulled language that's already in our code for site plan design review, that says you wouldn't need a barrier for outdoor seating or retail areas, which are separated from parking lots or auto travel lanes raised by curbs, ballards, landscaping, or other contiguous ex- existing physical barriers. So if there's something already in the way, you're fine. If there's a raised curb, that even meets it. Um, so we're just mimicking our same standards. And next slide. That is my last slide for um, this proposed round of changes. For the onsite private property ones, we've only had one application so far to apply for this next round or this next year. Um, I think some others were sort of waiting to see if any of these changes would be implemented, or how the program would change. But I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Just one, is there any requirements that these things be uh, secured in any way?
Uh, you mean structures to the ground, or?
Yes.
Yes. Mm-hmm. And then our building department will review all of them as well, and fire takes a look in addition. So we are um, very concerned that any of these giant sails would sail away. And so um, utmost concern.
Thank you.
All right, any more comments, questions? So um, for staff, are we gonna, we'll, we'll still need to take a motion for each one of these, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So um, we have the four items. Do we have motions or direction on those four items?
I have a motion, but I wanted to ask our attorney, we can't do them all in one batch? If they're read individually?
No, no, um, because there may not be uniform voting on each one. So I'd prefer to do it separately if, unless.
Just trying to speed it up.
Sorry.
So uh,
I moved res- approval of resolution, I'm going to take them in order twenty one oh one by their numbers.
Um, that, oh.
So that's designating.
Okay, you're not taking them in order of?
Want me to read it, Tony?
Go for it.
Twenty one oh one is designating certain areas of the city's public sidewalk to be used for display and sale of goods and merchandise.
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
Hi.
Commissioner Rachel Lyle Smith?
Hi.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commission President Rocky Smith?
Aye.
Remove approval of resolution twenty one oh three, adopting the sidewalk obstruction standards operating policy.
A second.
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Rachel Lyle Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
And Commission President Rocky Smith?
Aye.
Who's adopted resolution twenty one oh five?
Optimizing the public works engineering fee schedule and amending.
And amending resolution twenty number dash thirty six.
Second.
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Rachel Lyle Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
And Commission President Rocky Smith?
Aye.
Last but not least, I've moved to adopt resolution twenty one fifteen revisions to the parklet and private property restaurant slash retail guide for March seventeenth, two thousand twenty one, through November thirtieth, two thousand twenty one.
A second.
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Rachel Lyle Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
And Commission President Rocky Smith?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you for your hard work, staff. I know it was not easy.
Thank you. Commissioner, you've been efficient. Commission President Smith, you want to do a time check? We're at ten o'clock.
Yeah, we're at ten o'clock. Uh, we have communications to get through. I think we, is everyone good to hang out for the next however quick communications?
I am happy to hear from the city manager, and uh, I don't have anything that I absolutely burning to report.
Okay, well, let's go to city manager communication.
Is there consensus?
Yes.
I saw sort of small.
Great. So the, the Ki- Katie, can you pop up the slide for me real quick? So the, I have three things I want to walk through real quick. So we have um, mayor-elect Rachel Lyle Smith. Um, so obviously, once she, uh, her seat will become vacated as a commissioner, and the commission will then go through a process to appoint a new um, commissioner to that position. We've had some communication with Clackamas County Elections. We anticipate that we should get the official canvas from the county on Friday, March twenty sixth. So these assumptions are based on receiving that at that point. So the official county canvas um, certifies the official vote. Um, where we then will bring it to the commission to adopt the uh, the vote at the April seventh city commission meeting. So this is a, a question about how to move forward with um, the process to appoint uh, uh, and fill the vacancy. So we've, we've identified two options. If we receive the canvas from the count, the county on, on March twenty sixth, we could conceivably start the advertising for the open position. And in this scenario, we propose keeping it open for sixteen days from the twenty ninth through April fourteenth. We would then um, review the applications and start the scheduling process. Um, and then we would try to conduct interviews, and this is tentative. We, you know, we've kind of looked at calendars, but we're still going to need to certify, you know, and ensure not only are all the commissioners available, but you know, whether we have four applications or ten, you know, there's going to be some, some scheduling that we're going to have to accommodate. And then uh, for that position, you know, assuming that we can get to a decision by the commissioners can make a decision after the interviews, uh, we're looking at April twenty ninth. The alternative is to wait until Commissioner Lyle Swit- Smith is sworn in at the April seventh. And then we would essentially run the same timeline, just starting on the day after that commission meeting on April seventh. Uh, if we go to the next slide, you know, part of this is trying to, um, I apologize for the lot of going on here, but you know, essentially, when we start looking at May, you know, we've got budget hearings starting on May third, commission meeting, budget meeting potentially on the sixth. Um, so we were trying to get someone on board in time to be part of the budget hearing discussion um, as well as, you know, the calendar with May, with both city commission meetings, work sessions, other engagements which aren't on here, such as South Fork and other committees that are, that, that commissioners sit on. And then you put the budget committee on top of that. You know, the scheduling becomes an issue, as well as, I think primarily what we were trying to do was fill the position through a thoughtful process, but have them, that position filled in time to at least participate through the budget hearings. So looking for a little bit of direction, if we go back one slide, Katie, as to how the commission would like to proceed.
All right, comments on that? Um, well, I'll start. I, I guess my, my only concern is at, you know, um, I, I would like to see the quicker timeline if possible, but I, I also um, understand that in some people's mind until the mayor is actually sworn in, there's a question. If we get the canvas from the county, though, that's pretty much it. I mean, that's pretty much the official word that this, that seat is a, open. Um, and it's just um, you know, um, comes to the commission. It's not like the commission's going to change it. So um, I, I guess I'm open to that, but I, it, you know, if the county says, hey, well, that's not official until it's actually sworn in. She's actually sworn in, then I, I guess we wait. Commissioner McGriff?
Yes, thank you. Um, as much as I want to rely on the office that certifies the election, I have a concern that putting a deadline to something that we have no control over bothers me. And I guess I'm of the viewpoint that although we want to speed it up, if that deadline is not made, then we don't, we don't, we can't control that situation is what I'm getting at. And I would rather be safe than sorry. The position isn't vacant until it's certified and we declare it being vacant, according to what I've read. So that is just my concern.
Sure. So I think if we didn't receive it on the twenty sixth, you know, so this, this date, so if we received it on the twenty ninth, it would move to the thirtieth. You know, the one thing that we discussed to try to address that concern, you know, when we write it, you know, we are anticipating that position four will become available upon Commissioner Lyle Smith being sworn in as mayor. Um, it'll actually be open after she is sworn in. Um, I suppose the other thing we could do is, once we have the certification, we could call a special meeting and certify it and swear, and at that point. So, you know, once again, just looking, looking for direction and, and to see if we can address the concerns that are, if there are any.
Bird the hand is worth two in the bush. You have it in your hand, we have it.
Katie, as our, your.
Okay, Katie, go ahead.
I was just going to mention that by law, Clackamas County has to have the canvas to us by uh, March twenty ninth.
So um, Commissioner Lyle Smith?
So I figure since no one else is talking, I'll chime in. Um, yeah, my understanding is that once the vote is certified, then that's it. Um, everything else is just procedural. Um, and in fact, the city commission could actually vote to not approve the certification, and it wouldn't change anything. The certification by the county is actually it. Um, so you know, we're talking about just procedural. Um, I think it's really important for the new person to be on board, and if we can get them on board and get them ready to go um, to participate in, in May as much as possible would, would be the best scenario. Um, I don't have any heartburn, I mean, we've done this. Um, other, plenty of other job uh, applications go out, uh, you know, knowing that, you know, in one week. Um, really, we're talking about a formality, um, because this is, nothing's going to happen until we actually get the certification. So in that case, we're kind of holding up and causing us, causing the new person more issues if um, for our formality. But, you know, if, if folks are really uncomfortable with it, and maybe we have a special meeting, but I, you know, our, our goal should be to get the, the person on as soon as possible, coming in in the middle of the budget process, I think would probably be very difficult for them to participate, and depending on who it is, they'll probably be challenged to participate anyway, but.
So I mean, I, I feel the same way. I guess my only issue is, this could have easily been a question that we said to Clackamas County Elections, would they, I mean, because the worst situation could be that we open up the mayor, you know, uh, position. That we open up the mayor, you know, uh position uh or open up the vacant seat. And then we get some responses as, hey, wait, you didn't certify it. I mean, but if the county's saying as soon as we hand you those numbers, it's done. Then it's done. But we're not, I mean, that could be a simple question that we could have asked them. You know, if they say it um as, you know, um then I would feel a lot better about it. But um we're not hearing that from them.
You mean, whether or not the oath of office?
Yeah, if if the county elections office says, hey, we we, it's a done deal once we hand you the canvas. Um and they, then I would say, well, then it's fine. We don't have to wait to actually swear in the mayor. But if if county election, if we if we open that vacant seat before we actually certify it as a commission. And then county elections says, hey, wait a minute, she wasn't sworn in yet. I mean, that seems like the first place we would ask the question.
I don't have enough brain power to pull up the charter right now, so.
Well, I don't think it's a question. I mean, it's asking the election. They're the only ones that are gonna question if we do something, you know, if we open up that seat before it's open.
I I I guess, I don't care if you have anything to add. I guess I would just point out that, for example, for the recall, we don't bring the election. The Clackamas County Elections results back to the commission to affirm. I I don't know the history of why this is, this exists. You know.
We, yes, we did have the recall come back and that's why we had to wait for several weeks for the mayor to re- to to leave, right?
We we were waiting for the county to send us the official canvas.
Okay, okay.
We did not bring the canvas back to the commission to approve.
I I guess I don't know why we didn't just ask that question, have that not tonight. Because if the county sees that the canvas is the final thing, then then we have our answer for us.
Well, but you're you're not gonna, you're not gonna, you're not gonna fill this seat before the canvas comes back. I mean, so.
No.
All you, all you're gonna do is advertise it. So I think if you put some caveats on, you know, the schedule may have to change, I think that covers it.
Right.
And, you know, I think that, you know, what you've identified is the reasons to 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 move the schedule as quickly as possible. Justify sort of putting some caveats on and putting the posting that that I. There is nothing that's gonna happen between when you get the certified votes and when you swear in. There's nothing that can happen.
Right, right. All right, so do we have direction from, so wanna make a motion on that?
We haven't heard from Commissioner O'Donnell.
I'm just gonna sit this one out. I'm fine with, I mean, if if what Commissioner Smith says is correct. That once the certification is made by the elections official, everything else is just formality. And we're good to go as of immediately after March twenty-ninth at the latest.
I don't want you to take my word for that. And I can't make a motion, by the way.
Would we like to, we like to hold a special commission meeting once we receive the certified ballot, the the certification?
And and the purpose of that meeting is to.
Certify the ballot and swear Commissioner Lyle Smith is the mayor, and then we would advertise the next day.
Well, I also wanna defer to Mayor-elect Rachel Lyle Smith. Do you wanna get sworn in a special meeting? Or would, we're almost at a point where we can reconvene in chambers and do it in a more formal manner, so. Two different things, really, certifying the ballot and you're swearing in.
Right, and we haven't discussed anything regarding being in person or Zoom or anything like that. So um yeah, that's still, you know, a few weeks out. So I I don't have a strong preference. My stronger preference is that this meeting does not go to eleven o'clock, we're beating this death. So, you know, this is not a big of a deal, folks, so, you know.
Okay, then without direction, I'll wait until the mayor is sworn in and then we'll advertise after that.
I mean, it sounds like we don't have an illegal opinion on, you know, whether or not we have to have the oath in order for things to be official. So.
Well.
I've got no communications and I mean, I agree with Commissioner Lyle Smith about the length of tonight's meeting. I'm ready anytime.
So no more city, no more communications.
Up for me.
All right.
Anything pressing? I mean, he's actually, the, this isn't communications, this is making a decision and providing direction. So or the other two items, just communications that you can give us communications or you actually need guidance on and information on something?
No, this was the only thing I needed direction on.
So you have nothing else this evening?
Uh no, nothing that's that's pressing, no.
All right, everyone. Um happy Saint Patrick's Day and um we are adjourned.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.